Like call this meeting to order and glad to see that we're slowly getting back to normal. We got Angie back up here. So if you could call and roll, please.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here. Ready? John, could you lead us in prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance as we consider the business before us tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Alrighty, anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda? I had one that we maybe wanted to consider. We have Tom Clark giving us two presentations. And then how about we reverse Hamilton Township and make it number one and Newark make it number two? That way Tom's up here anyway. If there's no objections.
Well, I think I was just wondering about the library, the millage proposal. Is she gonna have a present, Jessica have a presentation?
She is on the agenda first.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
She's gonna be.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, consideration of new business.
No, here or no, we're just gonna.
Yeah, she is here.
Yeah. Why don't we get her up ahead? Because we got a lot of business.
Yeah, we're just gonna do administrators' report, commissioners committee reports, and then we be on to that.
Okay, but under ARP, we do need to add Fulton Township.
Okay, that wasn't there. So we're making that number 11, Fulton Township.
And making Hamilton Township first.
And then we're reversing number one and number two since Tom's already will be up here without objection. Now somehow you managed to get three spots. Okay, I see.
On the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. We have a second. Or by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion passed. We have an agenda. So first thing on it. We have the consent calendar. Anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Oh shoot, yep, I always get going on here. Brief public comment. Anybody like to make public comment? Please step forward. We still got the mic up here at the podium. So anybody speaking is gonna need to come up.
Good evening, everyone. Under Sheriff Sopsey, I'm here to speak on behalf of Sheriff Morris, who could not be here tonight. He prepared a statement he wanted me to read at this time, so. Your county commissioners, although I could not be here this evening, I have something that I wanted to bring up with you. It has to do with the ARP money. I know that the county has spent a lot of the ARP money so far. I feel it would be wise to hold back some of the money and not spend every dime of it. We have a great deal of time yet to figure out what to spend this money on. Other than personal protection equipment used every day in the jail, we have not asked for much. However, the air quality in the jail is very poor and we only have one holding cell that is a clean air system. The jail was built in 1975 and updated in 2001. It was not built with clean air system in mind. I'm looking into air purifiers for the jail, but have not committed to them, nor do I have a quote. With the jail accepting more inmates now with COVID numbers dropping, it is important to do some planning for the future would go out of control again. I am suggesting that the county keep back 1.5 million for projects that may came up, may came down in the next 18 months. I'm not asking to keep that for the sheriff's office, but for anything countywide that may came up, may come up in the next year and a half. Thank you, Mike Morris. Do you guys want this or?
I'm going to the clerk.
And also while you're here, why don't you give us an update about how many are in today and kind of the things that's going on in the community?
Um. Our daily jail count has been going up a little bit with loosening some of the restrictions for people that are coming into the jail. I don't know what the exact count is the moment I walked over here, but we're averaging somewhere in the 50 range a day. Jail capacity is 70. You're always supposed to keep it at 80%. That's what the state requires. However, 70 is filled to the pills over there. That fluctuates. Can fluctuate by as much as 10 in one, any given day. I know recently we had a big influx of people last week, which causes quite a backlog because still you have to follow MDOC's protocol. So when they come in, you can't just put them in a cell with everyone else. You have to go through and COVID protocol with them, which takes approximately 10 days to go through. Mix that in with a few people who were having some psychosis issues in the jail and some severe withdrawal. And we had interesting time at the Gresham County Jail. Other happenings. I can't remember when, but we purchased the mobile CAD version for computer aided dispatch. You guys approved the funds. It was $21,000 or something to that nature. We are actually receiving training right now in 20 minutes. They're gonna go through another training session. And then tomorrow we'll have more training on it. It's been a long time since I've seen Gresham County Sheriff's deputies excited, as excited about anything as they have been about this. We are taking a giant leap towards modernizing the sheriff's department. The woman who's teaching the class not only works for the computer company, but is also sheriff's deputy in Mississippi. And she's like, I cannot believe you guys don't have anything like this. She goes, we've had this current system for 10 years and it was the single best thing the sheriff ever did for the sheriff's office was to get this, this system. And we actually have the latest, greatest version of it. It's mobile. Mobile CAD 10.0 or 10.20 or something. It's the latest, greatest version of it. And it's really something. And we don't even have it fully integrated with the state of Michigan yet. Because we are the first department in the state of Michigan to go with a mobile CAD system that will link us directly to the lean and Nlets, which is the national law enforcement information. We'll be the first ones to do it in the state. In doing so, it's been a lot of paperwork for sheriff, myself, to, we have a meeting this Friday again with the head of lean for the state of Michigan to try and make sure that they will approve it so that we can actually hook that portion of it to our current mobile system. It's, it's gonna be really awesome when it works. I think the people from all over the country, because literally most every other state and union already allows this to happen. But if you know anything about Michigan with the way we are very guarded with our lean, which is wonderful. It takes quite a process, six to nine months. So we're a few months into it already. So I'm hoping by midsummer, we will have permission to be fully integrated with our, with our CAD system. Because when it, when it works, it's, it's, it's awesome. There's nothing. I came from an agency that had CAD or mobile CAD. And I honestly cannot believe in 22, we don't have mobile CAD in Gresham County. Because it is a game changer in how you do the job. It's game changer in efficiency. It's game changer in public safety. And the integration that they can come up with is, is awesome. So that's kind of what's going on with Sheriff's Ops right now. Knock on wood, we are holding our own staff wise. We have some retirements coming up. Dennis Guthrie, a lot of people in the room probably know Danny Guthrie is gonna retire after just under 40 years of law enforcement. He's only got 10 days, I think 10 days today till he retires. So he's only got a few shifts left to work. And then Al Schaefer, also been with the county for as long as anybody can really remember. He's retiring as well in June, which is gonna leave huge holes for us. I mean, you're talking 60 years of police experience. And I don't care who you hire at the police academy, you're not gonna fill those shoes. So we are lucky right now. We have a tentative offer into a young man who is in the police academy. Comes from between Claire and Farwell. I think his address is actually Farwell. I kind of came across him, reaching out to some contacts I have with police academies. He was not sponsored. Had him come do some ride alongs with us. He liked our department. He, one of his, my favorite quotes from him was, I've done some ride alongs with the police. This is the first department I've ever worked or rode with that people, the public waved to you with all their fingers when we drive by. So that was a good thing. And that's the community we live in. That's where all, that's you folks. That's where we live. We're blessed to be here. So anyhow, with that being said, we have a tentative offer out to him, but you can't give him a full blown offer until he passes. Me and all the things that go along with it. So that will take us back to home. But then we've got two, two people retiring. Talked with the sheriff on the possibility of sponsoring some people for this Falls Academy. That will be a huge step in the right direction as well. It's, I see Mark here. It's kind of the, it's the thing that you have to do now in order to get good quality candidates. And it's something that we did my entire career where I worked at Inham. A lot of times we would find people that maybe had a desire to be a police officer, but they couldn't either afford to go to the police academy or, or maybe reluctant to try it. But they came on board as corrections officers. And let's face it, once you have an employee that's proven that they show up seven days a week, 365, work Christmases, New Years, all the things, especially you fire an emergency personnel know that's a part of this job. Boy, it's nice to know that you've got somebody who's already made that commitment in life. It's really easy to transition them over, especially if they have that desire to go to the police academy. So right now we have a request out to our corrections officers, anyone that's interested in the possibility of it. And the letters are coming in. I, almost every day I have, or there's last couple of days in a row, I've came in and there's been one stuck in my door. So that's encouraging to me that I have young people who are interested in coming across from corrections and the, into the law enforcement realm. It's, it's really exciting for me to see that. So other than that, that's it.
I have another question for you. Don't you think with all of the counties all the way around Gresham County, don't you think we're very lucky to live in Gresham County?
Oh, hands down, hands down. I mean, it's a. I chose to live here. All of you choose to live here. You know, I, I drove through two other counties to get to another career for 25 years. And there's a reason why I did it. Because I wanted to live here. I like the people here. I like the culture here. I like the fact that.
Each other, don't we?
Absolutely. I like the fact that my neighbors know my name. I know my neighbors' names. I know if somebody strange drives in my driveway. Even when I was gone to Mexico, they knew to call my parents and find out who that was. You know, that's where we live. That is not everywhere. I still think back to, you know, friends of mine from college that, you know, I'd go visit them and I'd wave to their next door neighbor and they're like, don't, don't, don't wave to them. 25 year old man just got out of his car. I'm gonna wave to him. I don't even know what his name is.
You don't know what his name is?
You should have gone and shovel on a snowboard. So anyhow, that's the community we live in. We're blessed to live here. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Alright, anyone else like to make public comment? Matt, you see anybody online?
Just see Mark and Jamie, and I'm assuming they're both on the agenda, so.
Okay, alright. If there is anybody online, unmute yourself and you can address the commission. Let's move on to the consent calendar then. Anyone like to pull anything off the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion passed. Okay, Tracy, we're up to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair Board. Because there are so many people in attendance tonight, I will waive my report. I'll simply say that we've been very busy here. We've been working to get, help folks get these proposals ready for you. And I'll just have the board move on this evening then, unless you have any particular questions.
Thank you, Tracy. I think that's a record. I wasn't counting the words, but it's gotta be. Thank you.
I guess I'll say thank you.
Alrighty, Commissioner's Committee Report, John?
I don't have one.
George?
Uh, Commission on Aging, they've got or have received all of their parts and pieces to their aluminum ramps now. So those are available. And there will be a suggested donation for those. Month, a monthly donation because it'll, it's like a rent, if you will. But it's gonna help tremendously because a lot of people that need ramps didn't know it two weeks ago. And all of a sudden they went to the hospital. Now they need a ramp for, for a few weeks or, or longer. And so this will speed up the process, make it a lot easier for, for folks to come in and, and order a ramp. They can be built quite easily and quite quickly, half a day, and they can have a ramp. So that's one of the big things that's coming out of there. And that's all I have.
Alrighty, and all I have, I did attend the health board meeting. And we did give the health officer, officer a, a two-year contract because she was under a one-year contract. That's good through September 30th, 2024. And it was the first normal looking meeting I can remember there. There was no one in a room with mask on. Jan?
Yes, I attended Breckenridge City Council meeting last Monday night. And it was kind of a quick meeting, but we did talk about their projects that they want to do, where it's gonna be at. We also talked about, they have a lot of projects going on in, in Breckenridge. If you get a chance, you should take a drive down there. They've redone one of the buildings over, the Gemini Building on the corner. Added to the back of it. They're also have industrial park and there, there's three phases to that. And the first phase has been very successful. So they're now looking at the second phase to get that underway. And that's not what they're gonna be asking for this evening. But is there anything else you guys would like to add to that? I always enjoy going to the Breckenridge City Council meeting.
Thank you, Jan. Sam?
I attended Fulton Township public hearing, the planning commission for windmills. It was about 11:30 when we were finished and they did approve it to move it on to the board. I believe that's in two weeks. We have a special meeting for that. About it.
Alrighty, anyone have any questions? Okay, next we're on to new business, Gresham County Library Millage Proposal. Jessica handling that?
Hello, my name's Jessica Wilmore, Director of the Library in St. Louis. We're just asking a language proposal that passed eight. Pass again. Nothing different still for eight years and half a mil.
Anyone have any?
When you asked us to approve this, it's like you had somebody, yeah, like a attorney or somebody write this up, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Had somebody write this language out? Or this language you used a number of years ago for military?
It's, it's very similar to what was used eight years ago. We had Laura Beaver review it.
One second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? Okay. No discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion passed. That'll be placed on the ballot.
My concern was you didn't want me to help you write. Wherever you guys go for me.
Good afternoon, everybody. Apologize for my disheveled look. But I was called out about 4:30 this morning on some horses outrunning down the road in the fog. And we had a cat spaying clinic. So if anybody drove by there, you've probably seen all the cars. Did approximately 55 or so cats. It's all the other complaints. So if you smell something, it's probably me. Haven't, haven't had, you know, with, with the horse manure, with the cat spray and not being able to take a shower this morning, it, it's probably a combination of that funk. But I appreciate you guys, the invitation for coming in. Let me come in. It's not my 2021 animal record for animal control. We had shutdowns and screenings coming in. Take this back. What we did is we had shutdowns and screens coming into animal control. We had to be extra vigilant. And we went on complaints to try to not spread COVID to one another. Our department is small, only three people in it. Emily, animal control officer that is in her 11th year. Blair Woodgate is going on her third year as our office manager. And I've been here for 25 years, 18 as director. So I appreciate that. Our numbers were fantastic in 2021. Had a live save rate of 99%, which is phenomenal. It was not too many years ago that the number was down in the 60 to 70% range. You know, so back when I first started, our numbers were, were even a lot lower than that. Our, our save rate was approximately eight to 10%. You know, we didn't have the spay neuterings. We'd take in about 5,000 animals a year. And with the population that we have here in Gresham County, that just was not, you know, you couldn't manage that many, that many animals. But the whole state of Michigan was like that. This was mainly due to cats. Cats are by far the hardest animal to find homes for. We have several organizations in the area that specializes in finding homes for cats because of this reason. Gain and Dallas to the rescue are a few of those. We've teamed up with Gain for a number of years and tried to reduce the number of unwanted cats and kittens. Gain usually has one to two cat clinics a month to the Ways of the West. They will typically spay neuter approximately 50 cats in each one of their clinics. We have a gentleman's agreement with them that when a feral cat is fixed, we will contribute an average of $10 per cat. The cats also receive a rabies shot as well. Last year alone, we contributed through our donation line item, approximately $2,020 for the feral cat program. Dallas has a low cost spay and neutering clinic that comes to her place in Elma. They typically stop by once a month. And which is, which is phenomenal. It's called Spay Neuter Express. They used to come out to our animal shelter, but unfortunately our parking lot just isn't quite big enough, you know, to be conducive for. When they pull in their big bus, it really limits the space that we have out there with animal control. We did start a new program for spaying out to animal control as well. We have a vet that comes in from Grand Rapids. Her name is Dr. Amy. She's been fantastic. Actually out there today doing a, doing a fair, not really a feral cat clinic, but there is some ferals in there. But she normally, normally schedules up to 60 cats and then hopes to get in about 50 to 55. So she's been hitting these goals, even in the bad weather that we received with our clinics. She actually has one today. The residents of Gresham County start dropping off their cats around 8:00 AM and they start picking them up about 2 o'clock or so. We don't have to keep them overnight for anybody. So that's what's nice about that. If you look at the cat numbers, this has dropped in a total intake significantly. We have also started a program out here to where we do not take in full cages of cats. We only take in cats that we know that we can move. Sometimes this can be a little controversial, but we do not have to put otherwise healthy, although maybe not adoptable cats down. We are still promoting our home to home program. This is where an owner of an animal can send us in a description of their pet, along with a picture and a phone number. We post it on our Facebook page to where potential adopter can, can call the owner directly and view the animal in a natural home setting. The animals have a tremendous success in finding new homes. This does quite a few things. This keeps them out of the shelter environment. And it also, you know, is, is allows that animal to, to be shown in a home environment around people. And you can see how they interact with strangers if somebody was come over your house. So that home to home project is, is really a good, good program that we have. We've been enjoying our new kennels that were put up last year. They give dogs a lot more room to walk around in. And we've, we have had a little bit of a snag with the concrete work for the drains and the guillotine doors that were supposed to be installed with everything else going on. We've been having a hard time finding a contractor to come in and do that little project for our concrete work. So building the grounds has, Ryan out to building the grounds has stepped up. And he is starting to put in our drains right now as we speak out to animal control. We're just waiting on a little bit better weather to pour cement. But he's got them cut. He's got them laid and it's ready to go for cement. We included our 2021 annual inspection report. We also received a 100% compliance rating from our inspector. This is a state certified vet that comes in from Department of Ag. They inspect our shelter on a on-call basis to where it's, they, they don't give us a heads up. They just show up. So feel really positive about that 100% rating. The only thing that we had in 2020 was a, a door that had some rust on the bottom of it that was starting to deteriorate. Ryan for building his ground and grounds set up the contractor come in, install that new door. And so that made us 100% in compliance this year. I want to thank Building the Grounds for doing that project too. That was also fantastic. I also included our 2021 Animal Shelter Report. These are basically the same numbers that I have included to you. This broke down a little bit differently for state reporting. And that's all for my report. Do you guys have any, any questions on it?
Shelter transfer. You moving one from another?
It is. It's moving, it's moving from one, one shelter to another. So a particular shelter in our area might have a need for, for maybe a Siamese cat or, or a lab, you know, or something like that, or a small dog. Yeah, so they'll go, they'll go online and Blair does this too in our shelter. You know, if she'll go online and, and look at some of our other shelters and that in the area. And if they have a particular animal that maybe we might have a potential adopter. We did that with Saginaw County. I believe it was last year. We had a couple of dogs over there because they were at capacity. And at that time, we were way down on our numbers. So we actually took in a couple of dogs that we thought we could move for some potential adopters and we were good enough to do that. And it worked out perfect.
Question, yes, on page seven of the report.
Yep.
And I think this is from 2020.
Yes.
But it says not yet increased due to county restrictions on building occupants.
Yep, that was in 2020.
Right, right. So how, do you have a lot of volunteers?
We do. We have approximately 150 volunteers out to the shelter. They, they usually come out, especially in summer months when kids are out of school. And some of the parents can bring them out or their babysitters do. But we have, we have volunteers that come out all the time. Like today, we had approximately 10 volunteers helped us with our spay neutering clinic. So that's all put on by us. You have Dr. Amy that's out there. And she has two paid staff as well. But we have approximately 10 volunteers that come out. And they do everything from like expressing bladders, shaving down bellies and, and the areas on a, on a male cat and giving them shots and everything else. And so plus checking in animals and also getting them back to their owners. Right now, we're starting to be in, restrictions have been lifted a little bit. We're starting to allow volunteers to come in, in a little bit more capacity. Thanks, Tom. You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, Tom. Looks like you're on to.
Water heater. Yeah, unfortunately, our water heater out there has decided to be intermittent when it's working. And it's a commercial grade water heater. It's lock bar. And it's, to fix it for about $1,000 for the part, plus a little bit for labor. The water heater though is over 25 years old. It was, it was here before Harold House was our director for Building and Grounds. And, you know, so it's been, it's served its life. So what we would like to do is because at that time, they, they didn't have on demands or on demands were not quite as popular. We use a tremendous amount of hot water out to the shelter for all of our daily cleaning. You know, literally hundreds of gallons every day. So what we've had to do about a deep cleaning is, you know, run the hot water out of, out of water or run the water heater out of hot water. So what we've had to do, a lot of deep cleaning is, you know, run the hot water out of, out of water, or run the water heater out of hot water. And then let it warm back up, let it, let it heat back up, spray her down again, and do this process. And so repeat that process. What we'd like to do now is, you know, install an on-demand hot water heater, being ours is, is on its last legs. It served its life, it's served a very good life. And, but we would like to demand how. And so I brought in two quotes. Ryan from Building and Grounds set these quotes out. And we had two, two people that responded. We had Bendon Heating and Cooling, they're out of Riverdale. And then we also had Custom Heating and Plumbing out of Mount Pleasant. And so a hundred dollars difference in price. Bendon is twenty-eight hundred dollars and Custom Heating and Plumbing is thirty-six hundred ninety-four dollars. So they're, they're a little bit different, you know, a little bit more on, on the custom heating. But Bendon, the only thing on here is electrical is to be performed by electrician of, of our choice. We already have all the, we, we already have the two-twenty in the room and everything else, so it wouldn't anything our Building and Grounds Department, I think, are more like, they wouldn't have to run new wire, it's all, it's all right there.
A year ago, you did some remodeling out there. Can you tell me about how much you put into the, the animal control already?
Yeah, our, our cages that you guys approved, it was our capital improvement, were approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for the new cages. That was for new, seven new cages inside and then three new kennels outside as well.
Okay, also the painting and all that stuff, how much?
The painting was, was minimal because we did the painting ourselves, so it was just the cost of paint. I'd had a couple hundred dollars in that. We did the, we did the painting along with volunteers.
Then, Tom, we're looking at apples to apples on these.
Yes, yep, apples to apples.
I always like to see us do business in Grashit County when, when we can.
Yep, these are, these are apples to apples. Both places said we, we would not run out of hot water. We do have big enough gas lines and that already coming in. We have a natural gas line already that's out to the shelter that comes in. So, you know, we don't have a propane pig out there or anything like that. But what I like about this feature, too, of an on-demand is when we're not using it, it's sitting there idling, water heated up and everything else. So I, I truly believe it will be a lot more efficient as well.
Also, my other question would be, this would be coming out of general fund?
Well, you're working it into your budget, or?
Building and Grounds is where I would believe that it would come out of. It would be probably in one of their capital improvement projects. Unfortunately, it wasn't, you know, we didn't, we didn't see it, you know, back when the, back when capital improvement was, was approved. But this is one of those things to where, you know, it just, unfortunately, a hot water heater basically is intermittent right now. Ryan got it up and running. They kind of gave him some pointers on, on how to get it up and running, and he was getting it up and running. But it's, it's cut down on us a couple of different times. So he's been able to go out there and kind of tap on it and work on it and get it going.
I believe you need hot water out there, and if you think these Bendon folks will do a great job, I would make that motion.
I do. I think Building and Grounds recommended them. They have, they've used them for other projects here in the courthouse, so that's, and Ryan's the one that reached out to, reached out to everybody.
I, I would approve those guys to build. Also, whether you need to do it or not, you just got to get my water.
And also.
So that's a motion, Sam.
Yeah, I'll second it, but I might could also put that it comes out of Building and Grounds.
All right.
You know, departments generally do not have a large maintenance budget. Buildings and Grounds has a budget for these kinds of things. This wouldn't have been a capital improvement project, it would have just been a, you know, a maintenance object. So it'll come from Buildings and Grounds. If there's a need to move some money around within the Buildings and Grounds budget, that will be done. But, you know, we're, we're pretty used to doing these kinds of things, getting the money in the right place.
Any just.
About to move the money, I just come fix it.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's somebody else.
I appreciate it.
That's Chris's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Thank you, Tom. All right, now we apologize to Newark Township, and you're gonna still be up there.
All right. Okay.
Are we entering into?
We are moving into L.
Okay, I would like to see instead of, hear from all of them before we make a deci- decision of the money part of it.
I think that makes sense. All righty, go ahead, Tom.
Well, thank you again for, for letting me speak. It, I'm, for those that, that didn't know, I'm also the Hamilton Township supervisor. So I apologize for wearing my work uniform, but I didn't have a chance to go home and change. Thank you for allowing us to present a plan for the Hamilton Township Hall. I did include a bunch of pictures for you in the packet, and I hope that you're able to take a look at those and see what our, what kind of disrepair our hall is in. The Township Hall started out its life as a one-room schoolhouse in the Little Burke Sickles. Township Hall address is seventy-eight fifty-three East Fillmore Road. We are a very small, unpopulated township that is very stagnant in growth. We currently do not have any businesses in Hamilton Township, other than a gravel pit campground. Our parcels of land get passed down from one generation to the next, leaving at the capped rate. We currently have four hundred and seven taxable parcels with approximately five hundred residents and two hundred and six housing units, according to our Census MTA. We are very unique in Hamilton Township, as fifty percent of our land is state land. We receive pennies on the dollar for this land, as, as it is considered recreational land for everyone to use freely. We receive payments for this land through a PIL payment, which is payments in lieu of taxes. This year, the state cut us out a check for forty-two thousand dollars, of which we will get back approximately seven thousand dollars from the Treasurers Office. So they tie up half of our township, and basically we'll only get about seven thousand dollars for that, for that land. This is not a significant amount, considering it is half our township. We were also fortunate enough to receive seventeen windmills in our township through two building projects. Unfortunately, these windmills are starting to depreciate at a rapid rate. According to the border review documents, they will depreciate seven point five percent this year alone. We currently charge one mill for operating, which we actually only collect point nine one one nine. We charge one and a half mills for our roads and bridges and point seven five mills for our fire and rescue. However, we are now in the Ashley Fire Authority, which the new millage rate is going to be one point five mills, which means that we will have to deplete our general fund by approximately forty-two thousand dollars to cover the additional costs this year. We were blessed with an ARPA payment of about forty-six thousand dollars to use in Hamilton Township. In today's times and costs, forty-six thousand dollars does not go very far with building supply. I've included pictures of our one-room schoolhouse Township Hall. We would like to take the money and repurpose our little hall. We would like to re-side, re-roof, put in new windows, and revamp the inside of the hall. We would also need to make our, our hall fully handicap accessible. We'd like to make a parking lot out back of the halls, we currently do not have any room in the front of the hall to park. When we have elections, the election workers take up our spaces that we have for our residents to use. We currently have approximately three to four spaces for our residents to park. We would like to make the new driveway to the east of the hall, and have our parking lot out back to the north of the hall. We have approximately an acre of land that we could turn into a new gravel parking lot. This would keep our residents from having to park in the lawn amongst the trees and keep them from running into our well halls, which I showed pictures of, of that being smashed up and everything else. We would like to make a new entry that is handicap accessible on the north side of the building, and we would like to revamp the bathroom, make it handicap accessible as well. The ceiling tiles in the building need to be replaced, and the building needs to have hot water installed. Just like the shelter, sometimes our hot water doesn't work out there. And currently, we do not have hot water in the building, as our water heater is not up to par. We would like to replace our lights with modern LED lighting, and we would also like to add a small kitchenette in the building as well. We would like to open it up for small gatherings for our residents to be able to utilize it. We know that a new building would be out of our price range, but a new modern revamp would be very beneficial to our residents to use. We'd be able to allow our residents to use this building for senior meetings, baby and bridal showers, family gatherings, and small open houses. We would like for the commissioners to gift us up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this major renovation. We will also use the forty-six thousand dollars that we received from the ARPA funds. We would like to be partners with Grashit County, as we would match twenty-five percent of the building project with our money. With being partners with Grashit County, we would have skin in the game. We have a local Hamilton Township contractor that is giving us bids on the major, on this major undertaking. And we would also have a, a local Hamilton Township residence give us a quote on the driveway addition. We put the, we put this project amount higher than anticipated, as we do not have the concrete numbers yet from our contractors. Hence why we're asking up to a hundred and fifty thousand. I've spoken with Chris already, and it can be a moving dollar mark that is earmarked for this project. If the amount comes in lower, which I wholeheartedly anticipate, the money can be used on other projects in Grashit County. This project is very unique in that a resident could see the work being done and would greatly benefit, benefit from this, you know, thirty to forty years down the road. We greatly thank you for your time and consideration with this huge undertaking and for helping the residents of Hamilton Township in creating a more user-friendly hall for us to conduct township business. You have the, any of the pictures of the hall? Okay.
Yeah.
As you can see, you know, they're, they're not doctored up, no filters on the camera.
I probably put a couple bucks up for mixing broken window, you know.
I know, I know. That, that's our, that's my car, that's, that's in there as a reference to show exactly how many parking spots we have. The biggest, the biggest project is going to be the, the addition of the new driveway, going up the east side of the building and then out the back of the hall. To remove all that sod, put in fill sand and, you know, put in gravel as well. I anticipate that's probably going to be the biggest expense that we're going to have. It's a steel roof on the building, so revamp that. It's got aluminum siding, so, you know, update it with new modern vinyl siding, new windows. Put the door onto the back of the building instead of on the front of the building as well. And that way, our residents will have a, a straight entryway to come in instead of a curved, jaggy entryway for our hall.
Tom, I'm looking at, you said the forty-six thousand is, is twenty-five percent of the project you're talking about?
That forty-six thousand is, is what we received.
Okay.
And so what we would do is, is be partners with Grashit County and, you know, for every, every dollar you guys spend, we would spend twenty-five percent or twenty-five cents on the dollar for every dollar that, that we used.
Because I was just doing the, I was just doing the math real quick, and if forty-six thousand is twenty-five percent, then you're talking about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
And, and that, and that could be, and that could be. Yep, I just, we just threw out that hundred and fifty and, and to be partners, because what we would do is, is also use general fund money if we didn't have enough to, to come up with that. Yep, so I threw that, that hundred and fifty, and then with ours, it throws it up to approximately two hundred, which is more than enough to revamp that little hall. I, I anticipate those numbers to be a lot less. But without having our contractor with his numbers, he's been swamped, and so he is working on those numbers as we speak.
I think by listening to everybody first, we got about thirteen of these. I just think that's going to be a lot of numbers. We ought to tell these folks kind of where we're at with money. See about three more million, three, a little over that, probably at the end of the month, end of May, something like that, I think, when they give the second round. My thoughts are, we, I thought we had talked about the last meeting, put a half, one and a half million dollars away for the county, for rainy day fund. I, I see the sheriff come in and mention that, but I thought it was me, that's why I looked at John. I thought Mike was here, but that's kind of what we thought we did last meeting, is that we're going to put a million and a half. We have a couple, three years to spend this month. And so we looked at a million and a half for rainy day fund. And so when we look at putting money out, we probably have was it a million?
I've got a shoot.
About a million eight.
Yeah, million.
About a million eight put out, if we keep a million and a half to the county. You know, I have this money, like I say, it's going to come in about a month, I believe. Myself, I guess, Hamilton Township's never going to get a windfall like this.
Never.
It's tough to look at. I don't know if any of you have seen the Township Hall, it's got broken windows, it's got the siding falling off. Not be greeting Hamilton Township, but I thought it was somebody's old house, that it was a Township Hall. I guess I drive by it all the time and ever look at it.
What I like about this project, too, is that it's going to be a project to where you can actually see what the money is being spent on. It's not going underground where you never see it. It's not something that's, that's going to be a one-time thing, you know, for a project, and then next year not have the funding for it. This is going to be something that'll be up thirty, forty years from now, and you'll still be able to tell the upgrade and the face look that's had.
I don't know, Sam, I guess where I'm at, I mean, we've asked all these folks to bring proposals to us. You know, rather than setting a million and a half, I think we ought to split it up among these folks. We asked them to give these proposals, so.
How are you planning on paying for the county stuff?
Well, I think we've been paying the bills as we're going.
Well, also.
A lot of special projects that we put on for the, for that one and a half million, if you.
I haven't seen any special projects, George.
I also have a thing to talk about, too. But I, before I talk about what I want to talk about in here.
Thomas, you have fourteen proposals, you have, we've had them for five days. I mean, we've had, all had them, and on our agenda.
That's right, but I think out of respect, we work for these people, and out of respect, they have the option to talk.
I think they'll have the option to sit down and have them wait for four hours, then they come back and say, what are we going to do? It doesn't matter to me, I'm here.
I'm here for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got any thoughts on this?
I think this needs to be done. I mean, I would make a motion to the Township Hall right now. I think I will think the same.
We just said, we've asked all these people to come in, well, they were notified to come in and do a proposal. I think it's fair to listen to them and to see how we can work it out to, it's fair with everybody. And again, we work for these people, and they're the ones that we've asked to come in to talk about what their needs are. So let's give them a chance, and we've got, we've got plenty of time to listen to this. I don't think the rest of them are going to be that long, seemed like a long time because.
Yes, that's fine with me, I'm going to be here also.
I just want to, you, I, I know you've gotten this paper because I got it, and I haven't been here. So, I mean, you got the courthouse facade for a hundred and fifty thousand, courthouse downstairs about fifty thousand, panic button for the courthouse, sixty thousand.
Aren't those all under the amount?
There's about five hundred thousand dollars of projects that we, we don't have in a long-term agenda. But if we keep a million and a half out, when those come along, we'll have money still to be in those. I mean, I, I believe that's what the rainy day.
I just don't want to spend that.
I think we have five hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars in those projects, the list that's on there. That was for, I think it's for something about with cameras in here and cameras in the courtrooms or something and some stuff like that. I think that was, correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, is that right, it was about five fifty?
Five hundred seventy-four, as I recall, five hundred seventy-four thousand. I do want to point out that the list of projects was sent out to each of you on the tenth of March. The document has been refined over time, and I think I mentioned that at the time, that the document was sent to each of you that included the county projects back of the tenth of March. What you have tonight is that document without the county projects, because it was my understanding that I, you would not be considering those this evening, that this was the, this was the time for all of the others who are present tonight to make their requests. Considering those this evening, that this was the this was the time for all of the others who are present tonight to make their requests.
All right, well, why don't we move forward without objection? Next up, we're back on the list, Newark Township then.
Good evening, I'm Becky Roseland, Newark Township Supervisor. We had sent a proposal in to request the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars to be used at our township facility. We are a small township of eleven hundred residents, seven hundred and forty partials. Three quarters of our budget is spent on roads, fires and drains, and as those costs keep going up, there's just nothing left, only maintenance for our township hall. So at this time, we have received one hundred and eight thousand dollars from the the Federal Reserve. So we would like to do new siding, new roof, new ramp, which has been condemned by our insurance company. And some new doors, new porches, and that amount is ninety-three thousand dollars just for that, and that's a twenty percent increase possibly because of building materials. So inside, that's what we're asking funds from you folks for. We need a new furnace. Our furnace is close to fifty some years old that we can recall. So we need to put a furnace, air conditioning in, and then the updated electrical next to Lake Side Electric is just electrical for the furnace. The next one from Lake Side Electrical is lighted exit signs. Right now, we have paper signs throughout our township hall. So the insurance companies got very excited about those and the lakes and lighted signs. So we'd like to make that happen. And then the ramp to go, the handicap ramps that's been condemned by the insurance company, just to put the ramp in. Then we will take care of the siding, the roof, the porches, doors, all the other extra things that need to go along. The final request on this proposal is an eight thousand dollar chip seal for a mile on Fillmore Road. It comes right up to the south side of Ithaca. It's a great exit out of Ithaca for emergency equipment. The road at one time was a mile curved down to the goal for three miles, and twenty-five years ago, that entire section of the goal road was. Just chopped up, made into gravel. And. That's what we had thought we would do with this section of Fillmore Road, but the road commission thinks it's in the best interest to chip seal it, will be less expensive. Than to gravel it, clear it down, keep a brine like that. So we'll cost share that with the road commission. For the township, eight thousand dollars for the road commission share. We have not we for six or seven years, they have asked us to take care of this road, and we have not had the eight thousand dollars to fix it, and as those costs go up. So we put that into the proposal. As a wish list of things to put our township back into good order, get the road fixed, get the township hall fixed, and then we can maintain our brine, gravel, fire. That we pay drains, all those things that we have to fix. So we're asking you for that. If you don't know where Newark Township is, it's on the corner of Eldred Road and Buchanan Road, right on the south side of it. Plus a pass around those. If I have any questions? What did I say? Okay. You're supposed to just know where that is. Okay, thanks for your consideration.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you for a nice quick report. Okay. Number three, Village of Breckenridge.
Hi there, thanks for putting us on the agenda. I'll be brief to keep thinking long. We have a project that we started working on two thousand and nineteen. We purchased some land from the church. If you look at page C two on the information, or C one, I'm sorry. Information we sent you and you hold it horizontally, the upwards part. Purchased the land from the church, which would be on the east side of Third Street. With so this project has. Fell red since two thousand and nineteen. Slowed it down, however, we want to continue moving forward. Just a little history, in two thousand and nine, thirty percent of the homes in Breckenridge were foreclosed or for sale. At current date, there's not a there's two empty homes that are not for sale, the folks don't want to sell them. The houses are full and there's nothing for rent. If you look to the to the north of the project area, that is two twenty-eight East Saginaw that was just renovated. With one point four million dollars to create two commercial spaces and four residential apartments. Those are already leased. The project was done a month ago. They're already full. So Breckenridge has made leaps bounds as far as fixing our infrastructure, fixing our roads. We've paid for that over the last fourteen years. We found a way to stretch the budget to work the numbers. This project is something that would allow our residents, this growing population, something to do at little or no cost. It's an outdoor pavilion, and it also creates much-needed parking. We have the the purpose of the pavilion would be to have large gatherings outdoors. The whole intent is outdoor activities. We currently already do that. However, there's no restroom facility, so we have to rent portable facilities. We have to borrow electricity from the downtown businesses. We have to close off streets. And we this this causes parking problems with the businesses downtown. So this pavilion would be used almost every month out of the year. I doubt unless we get somebody hardcore that wants to do something fun in the middle of winter, that it would be used in the winter time. However, the rest of the year would be used for a multitude of activities, and it would be available for all kinds of organizations throughout the county. Currently, the. BAT Committee, which is our Chamber of Commerce, in coordination with the Grashit County Chamber, has a couple events back there each year. We are asking for five hundred thousand for this project. We're going to use our ARP money, which is one hundred and thirty-three thousand. And we also have sixty thousand pledged from a housing permission. For the project in quick math, I think that's around twenty about twenty-five percent, somewhere in there. And that's about it, unless you have questions for me.
I just know you do draw a lot of people into town. I was at the fireworks one day circulating petitions. We collected signatures from twenty-three counties at your fireworks. The largest group was from Saginaw. So you draw a lot of people into town.
Being over in the northeast, we we Breckenridge, actually, the Breckenridge area encompasses about forty-five hundred residents. We take in Midland County, there's we call us all the time for Miss Diggs and everything for Breckenridge, but it's in Midland County, so. It takes a lot of people call Breckenridge home that you don't really realize in the in the small village. There's about five hundred and fifty houses, but about forty-five hundred people consider Breckenridge their town.
Also, Jeff, you I had mentioned tonight that you have the industrial park that you also started. Why don't you tell them a little bit about that?
In two thousand and nine, we got Gutsy and we bought one hundred and fifty acres of land. Just to the east of our village limits, and then we encompassed that into our village. We we did phase one of the industrial park, which now has seven businesses and created one hundred and thirty-five jobs, which is. A little over ten percent of the interior population of the village limits. Just received funding to do phase two. We've been working on that for about four years. Phase two, that is also shovel-ready. That project will be going out for bid in, I would assume, about one hundred and twenty days. And then we have a final phase. We've already sold forty acres of that land. Interesting fact about that project is we've only spent thirty thousand dollars. So there's there's approximately eighteen million dollars worth of private investment out there. And so we're pretty good with the money. When we get it, we know how to use it and make it and put it to work.
The other thing I'm very impressed with, I took the tour with several of you, and we went out to see the is it a substation? You might tell them about that. I was very impressed with that.
Which one?
The one where we had the substation where we had to walk down into it.
Oh, our lift station, yeah.
Lift safe.
Yeah, that's we have five lift stations in Breckenridge, and we also do all the maintenance for Wheeler Township as well. Wheeler Township has a lift station and a sewer system in the village of Wheeler, and we do all their maintenance for them. And those are all brand new as well. We found we found a way to improve make all those improvements. All of our lead lines coming into our residents have been replaced. We did that. We did those in two thousand and ten. Way ahead of anything that happened that you heard of in the news. Ours are already replaced. We've we've made strides to make huge improvements to our infrastructure and our roads. Through processes and and forward thinking, and I think that has a big impact on and why it's attractive for people to move there.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Grashit County Road Commission, generators in a satellite garage.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So we have two requests. One of them is to put in two core generators at our main garage there in Ithaca. As you guys know, we're located on Center Street there. Our building was built nineteen forty, so it's eighty-two years old. We do not have generators there. Kind of came to light, one of the transformers blew, and we were without power there for a couple days. And it got us thinking that we really could have a generator. If we get a really bad ice storm, really severe weather. Be nice to keep our buildings operating. Our shop is located in there, and when our trucks come in from plowing snow, you need to melt it off. You got to get that ice, unfreeze everything, unplow everything. And so if we were to have two generators that would cover both buildings where our trucks are stored. We have eighteen frontline trucks that all the snow and all the townships and on the state, and we also have eight spare trucks. And so the total for that for both those buildings was eighty thousand dollars. So that's the first request. Second request I had is right now, we have our main garage there in Ithaca, and then we have three satellite garages. One is in Ashley, one is in Breckenridge, one is in Middleton, so we have three of the four quadrants of Grashit County covered. We do not have a satellite facility up in the northwest corner. Don't know why that is. We've never had one up there. All these years, we've had them in the other quadrants. Each one of those satellite garages has two trucks there, and two guys report to work there every day. So when they plow snow, they show up there at the satellite garage, and they start plowing snow immediately. They don't have to travel from Ithaca to get up, you know, to get up to Breckenridge or down to Ashley. Right away, they get to work in their in their townships plowing the snow. And so it really would really be nice to have a facility up in that northwest corner of the county. The road commission owns land there, Harris Road at M forty-six, there's a party store right across the street. We have thirty-eight acre parcel there. So we already own the land. It would be nice to put a facility there. And when I say a facility, it's really just a it's a large pole barn, a forty by sixty-four pole barn, sixteen foot high. Insulated, it's got heaters in there, so those trucks thaw out. And so the total quote I have for that is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so that that satellite garage would actually service Seville Township, most of Pine River Township, a little bit of Arquita and Sumner Township. So that's kind of it in a short version, and any questions you may have?
Because I have a question for you. Does most of your money come from state or federal or both?
Most of our money, all of our operating funds come from the Michigan Transportation Fund, the MTF. And so our MTF is approximately eight million dollars this year. We did not receive any of this, the ARF funds, the RF funds, the townships did, counties did, but the road commissions did not receive any. We do get federal funds, you know, we work through Oh, MCAG, Eastern Michigan Council of Governments, through the regional planning process. That's how we get our federal projects with federal funds. As far as our operating, we did not receive any of the ARF.
And mostly you do. It would be like when you go out to do the roads and stuff. Do the town, I mean, do you do the roads out in the country and in town? For some reason in my mind, I'm thinking like the road commission does state roads. Like the highways and.
Yes, we do. We're under contract. I believe there's sixty-six counties in the state of Michigan. There's eighty-three counties in Michigan. And I believe it's sixty-five or sixty-six of them have state maintenance contracts, so the road commission does take care of the state trunk lines. We take care of one one twenty-seven, M forty-six, M fifty-seven. And so that's in addition to our budget. So in in that case, we get reimbursed back from the state. We do the work and then M dot reimburses us back for our time plus eight and a half percent.
Altogether, what would your budget be for one year?
Our overall budget, approximately eleven million.
And I guess I have to ask this question, like I see you guys plowing like say in St. Louis by my by where I live. But I in some reason I keep thinking that also St. Louis has.
Be the city.
City.
Yeah, so city has to do their own, right?
That is correct, yeah. Incorporated cities and villages like Breckenridge as well, they they plow their own snow. The unincorporated villages for, for instance, Milton, for example, you know, we plow those streets. Riverdale, we plow those streets. Elwell, all those, they're unincorporated villages or cities.
And the other question I'd ask then is, so where does like say St. Louis get their salt? Do they get that from you to salt the roads and stuff?
We actually order it through the state as well as we do. Most municipalities buy their salt through the state, purchasing through Michigan Department Management and Budget. The state visits out, and so we all of us get our salt from the same source.
Okay. But where do they keep it? Do they keep it at your place, or do we have our own place? I guess I never knew this.
I they would have their own facility because they have it delivered right to their facility. Don't know where exactly they store their their salt, but they would have.
I'll go to St. Louis. I got to ask them where it's at. It just makes me curious to know where they keep it.
Yeah, like, you know, in in Ithaca, we've got a monster barn there that houses all of our salt. It holds roughly five thousand tons of salt in there.
I think I've seen it through the through where the you're the road commission. I've seen it out there before, but I guess they assumed. That you used that everybody used that same salt, but they don't.
If any of those agencies have ever run low, we actually will sell and give them some of our salt or sell, get reimbursed back, you know, at our cost.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all the questions.
Anyone have anything else? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Wheeler Township.
Jerry Rowley couldn't be here tonight.
Okay, you know who's going to handle it, or?
I I can.
I contacted Jerry Wheeler's home. He was actually. Not going to be able to attend this evening. I did. Did they? Did he submit written materials?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think then that the board would be asked to rely on those written materials.
It's it's right in the packet. That's a per total of six hundred and seventy-four thousand.
And that's basically for roads?
Yeah, it's all for roads.
Alrighty. Anyone want to make any other comments on that at all? Okay. We're going to move on. Village of Perrington.
Thank you for having us. We're here to ask you to consider repaving project for the half mile of our Robinson Street. Downtown Perrington. Most people, when they drive down that road, would probably think of that as a county road, but Village does maintain that for. Just about exactly a half a mile from M fifty-seven north to through the railroad tracks. We have some of our money that we've put aside and had planned on a new. Sidewalk project through downtown, replacing approximately three blocks of sidewalk, thirty-five on each block. At about just short of sixty thousand dollars to replace. At, at about uh, just short of sixty thousand dollars to replace that. Uh, we already have that actually on the books, waiting for a contractor to start that project. We planned on working with the road commission um to do a chip ceiling project, uh, to do some crack pouring and chip ceiling of that road. After having uh the road commissioner, Matt Buck from the road commission and uh some contractors um come out to us. We realized that that section of road may be in worse shape than we thought and uh our, our basically have been told that, you know, our, our crack ceiling and our chip ceiling uh that the county was gonna work with us on may not be more uh, more of a waste of our money than uh coming in there and doing a little heavier project and repaving that section. Um, this Jim, he's uh one of our council members. He's also worked for the road commission. He's been able to line up some of these contractors through the road commission and have uh one of the supervisors from the road commission come out. Um, do the study on, do, do some of the stuff on the road to, to make sure this is the um the way we need to go. Um, I have a letter uh that was wrote here for, from McKerny Asphalt, uh contractor on a land scene that came up and told us the same thing. You know, uh, anything short of repaving that half section is gonna be a, a waste of our money, um, essentially. Um, so we're asking for those funds, um, to complete that project. And the, the request there, it does um show that the price of that whole project. We do have funds available out of our account that we're putting into this project. Uh, we just wanted to let you know this whole project here when it was to be considered. Uh, by the time we're done, we're looking at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars between the sidewalks and the repaving of that half a mile stretch there. That stretch through there gets a lot of heavy farm traffic, uh, semis, doubles going to the grain facilities north of Perrington and using the loop going over to the MAC facility at Middleton. Um, lots of heavy tractor, tractor traffic also. Shorten off if anybody has any questions.
Uh, so, so you're looking at uh, the total project of two eighty-seven, but you're looking at putting in fifty-seven thousand, basically?
We do have the fifty-seven thousand plus a little bit more. We could allo- allocate that out of our general fund. But, well, anything we can come up to help us complete this project would surely be appreciated.
Again, would you, that's two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more. Oh, George had something.
But, alright, so I thought Perrington, we already received funds, correct?
We received three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We didn't think, at the time, we thought we had the money to complete this. When it came back, is the, our contractors are telling us that. You know?
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yep.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, Gracie County Fire Chief Association, who's gonna handle that?
Thank you. I think most of you know who I am and, and most you know, probably know who Bill is. I'm Dave Nelson, Fire Chief for the Gracie emergency services authority. Ithaca Fire and Bill Cody, who is the Fire Chief for Saint Louis Fire, Saint Louis area fire. Um, I know we came late in the game with, with this proposal. It's hard for all of our guys to get together on a regular basis. Um, but um everybody, I think, but Ashley's Fire Chief here, representing the, the six different departments in the county. Um, we, honestly, Bill put this all together for us. He had a little more time, I think, than the rest of us did. And um, um, when we, when we looked at this project and, and Bill and I discussed it, we started discussing with some other fire chiefs. You know, I understand one point two million dollars is probably not gonna happen with the amount of requests and the needs. There are some very uh good needs. It's been brought before this committee. Um, you know, sitting in your people's position, uh, you've got some difficult decisions to be made. Um, you know, I've sat on a lot of boards and committees in the past and I always look at the, look at the, the different things is, um, you know, uh, is these things a need, truly a need, or they kind of a wish list item? Are they will uh benefit uh the, the programs for a long time, like what Becky and, and uh, and Tom are doing with their township halls? Um, those, those are, you know, forty-year projects that will benefit their communities for a long time. Uh, when Bill and I discuss this, um, and if I'm sitting in your position, I'm looking at this, okay, the fire service is coming to us. You know, they're asking for one point two billion dollars. Um, fire trucks, just ten years ago, we replaced one for a little over two hundred thousand or four hundred. Bill's, Bill's been pricing them out there.
Yep. Yeah, we, we, we had estimates of fire trucks in November of four hundred and six thousand dollars. That same fire truck today is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've seen a sixty-three thousand dollar increase in fire trucks over a five-month period. And this is the same fire truck. This is what inflation has done to us rapidly today and the cost of COVID. Um, as far, do you mind? As far as I'm concerned, um, you know, with our project, our proposal that we have for you, it took some time to put this together because this is a project that affects every resident Gracie County. This is a direct effect to everybody. Um, we wanted to make sure that we brought to you a project that was a needs-based project, not a wants. Um, something that's gonna improve the lifestyle of every member of Gracie County, and that's what emergency services, this is what the fire department does. Um, our project comes with letters of support from nearly every township supervisor, every city manager, every village manager, every mayor in Gracie County. So everybody's behind this project because it does have a lasting effects, a twenty-five to thirty-year effect on our whole community. Every township, every city, every village. So, you know, we feel strongly about this being important to, to our communities. Um, the fire departments in Gracie County are volunteer-based fire departments. But I think we should draw out a big distinction between the fact that we are volunteer-based fire departments, but we do offer professional service. Um, our, our firefighters respond rapidly. They're trained at the same level as a firefighter in Detroit, a firefighter in Lansing. Um, there, there's no distinction between them. Fire doesn't know the difference. So.
And we've been working as, as a group of, you know, I, I met here a couple weeks ago with Jeff, Jeff Westall, but mostly you were that Ithaca Fire with the cities and township formed the fire authority about two years ago. Ashley has, has recently done that with three of their, their townships. Um, I, I discussed what we were doing in Ithaca with emergency services authority and affect of Ithaca and how it's gonna affect and and, and benefit um financially, some things and projects that Breckenridge may wanna do with, with those uh projects where we share uh districts in Emerson Lafayette Township. Uh, same thing with Ashley. Um, we've worked with our partners in the south. Uh, John Nay is the acting fire chief in, in Perrington. Their program came and asked to join ours last fall and we're finishing up the details on that. The, the, for, unless I'm, um, unless I incorrect, I think every fire department that serves this county has been very judicious with, with the taxpayers' money that, that's been given us. Um, I think at this point, uh, the only fire department that has any debt in the county is um, is Ashley and they're paying off. To be honest with you, they're paying off money on used equipment they've had to buy. Um, every single apartment in this county has at least one fire truck that's, that's twenty-five years old or older. Um, I, I don't know if they have more than that. Um, I know Perrington right now is working with, with two of them. They're, one of them's thirty years old. Um, these things don't last for other, just put, in the last two years, put ten thousand dollars into our twenty-four-year-old fire truck. So now we're getting to the point where if, if we have to put some of these purchases off, you know, another three or four, five or six years, we're not sure what the cost's gonna be or they're affordable. So um, the, the fire service, like everybody else, is finally, finally hit the, the the wall and we're having to look at the way we do things differently. And we've been doing that as a group. Um, like I mentioned, talking with Jeff and, and working with, with uh Bridget, you know, from their fire board and some of the things that we've tried to do, Bill's done a wonderful job with, with their program over there. Um, trying to modernize it at the same time, keeping costs for the citizens down. So there are very few departments around the state or very few counties around the state that, that can say that ninety-nine percent of their fire department are owned and paid for and that. So we're pretty proud of that fact. So uh, this is a big, big request. We understand that. There's a limited amount of money, but we, we've, we felt like Bill said that, that this project, um, out of all of them that might have been represented here tonight, affects every single citizen. And it will benefit in the long run, it goes for twenty-five to thirty-year projects. Appreciate allowing us to, to come and speak on this on behalf of the Fire Chiefs Association and the fire departments in the county and would entertain any questions that you might have for either one of us.
I'm looking here. It says, uh, each fire department will receive access to two hundred thousand in American Rescue Plan COVID relief funding. Is that already committed or is that part of this project?
But we're asking, that's our request. One point two million dollars to divide over six fire departments.
Okay.
At two hundred thousand dollars per.
Alright, I understand.
Is our request. And our proposal is a skin in the game approach. We want the fire departments to have a skin in the game. Um, if we were awarded one point two million dollars from the board, I would anticipate that to probably see six million dollars worth of upgrades within our community. As Breckenridge fires looking at doing an expansion on a, on a fire station, it's gonna be one point five to two million dollars. Um, a fire apparatus that we're seeing reach five to seven hundred thousand dollars for replacement. So this is seed money in some cases. This is the money that gets things started. Um, in some cases, the fire departments actually have the matching funds so they can make an order immediately. But I would say that you're gonna see not one point two million dollars worth of upgrades to emergency services. You're gonna see that modified tremendously.
We're, we're in a position with our program. We have about half or maybe a little better than half saved for our next engine, but uh, we thought, we thought at the two hundred thousand roughly, we have saved that we'd buy a new engine and it ain't gonna happen. And so um, so with, with matching dollars, Bill says, you know, with, 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 with some planning and, and, and some other grants, to be honest with you, grants from other other organizations. In two thousand, two thousand and one, af- after nine eleven, the, the, the federal government put a hundred million dollars out there in assistance firefighter grants program for fire departments all across the country. Um, in two thousand and eight, seven, eight, when the market crashed and, and last recession, they decided that they had big to large full-time departments that were losing staffing and couldn't afford it. So they cut that money right in half to the agencies across this, across the country and decided to put half of that into, to financing of, you know, of positions, uh, personnel in these big departments of Flint got three rounds of that, seven or eight or nine million dollars out of that. Um, Gracie County really suffered when they did that. Because that, to that point, before that point, we were, we were very, very successful countywide to getting some of that money. And in Ithaca, we got a grant for, for a tanker for sixty thousand. Perrington got one. Also, I know, um, I know Saint Louis got some money. I think Alma did. So those monies have dried up and gone away. Um, last year, I, I wrote four years in a row for grants for much-needed air packs for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I get turned down every time because um, you got a little bit of money in the bank, you can spend your own money and you have no debt. So, you know, we're, we're like most agencies now, the people that are planning and doing things and aren't doing them well, seem to be the ones that get all the federal dollars when it comes to the, to the, to put the money out there. So um, we've been very blessed with the, with the support we have from all of our citizens and, and the townships and the cities we serve. We're just reached a point where it's, it's critical now.
One of the keys to um the volunteer fire service state that quite often gets washed also and does, isn't recognized, is the savings that's created to the municipalities, the cities, the villages, the, the counties themselves. Um, you know, we operate on a payroll budget of a hundred thousand dollars for staff of twenty-five people. You know, imagine what we had to do if we, if we had to fund that as about, as a full-time fire department. There's two to three million dollars for the Saint Louis community of payroll dollars saved off the volunteers. So that money, what happens to it, it gets redistributed, right? Ends up as infrastructure, you know, quite often that's, that is what's building our roads and helping to build our, our water mains and our sewer lines and stuff, is the dollars that's there quite often saved by the volunteer fire service by not having to fund that organization. So we've done our part.
I just wanna say, I live one block from forty-six and our, this has had two major fires this year. And I mean, you guys are right on to it. Um, I live right there on the corner of um State and Saginaw.
Yeah.
But not only that, many times I've seen not only Saint Louis come out, but I've seen Breckenridge come over or Alma comes over to help fight these fires. And you, you don't realize it. I've been in a fire, so I know. Devastating. Because one day you have a home and the next day you have nothing. You have, you've lost everything. And it's very devastating. And so the work that these guys do to try to save something in your home, pictures or maybe heirlooms that were your grandparents or whatever, it's worth, it's worth millions sometimes because you can't replace those things. You can't replace a lot of the pictures. You can't replace the dish that your grandmother gave you, great-grandmother gave me. So I, I know where you're coming from. And the fireplace used to, or the fire station used to be right across the street from me. And every time you went out, of course, you'd see the lights, it'd flash in my bedroom and I'd get right up to see where you guys were headed and, but now you're down a couple blocks. Um, but anyway, you know, we all take this very serious of everybody coming here tonight and the money that you need. And I do have a proposal I wanna make after we're done here. That maybe helps everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See any other questions? Alright, next, uh, city of Alma. Eric?
Well, thanks for uh having me here and uh giving my uh, my little spiel. Obviously, I'm asking for every little bit right here, right now, with what I'm asking right here. You only have one point eight, as you say, million. I'm asking for one point five five to infrastructure projects. Obviously, I have tons of needs in a town of nine thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. We did grow up in population since the last census, so that was good news for us. Um, our, the, the one, the one million of that project is for five parking lots that remain in the downtown that we haven't um received any funding or uh been able to work out a, um, an agreement with the MEDC or a developer to help redo that. And the adjacent alleys to those, to those parking lots and the infra, the infrastructure underneath, i.e. the drainage. As we see more and more storm events, um, these twenty-five-year, thirty-year, fifty-year rain events happening on a more regular basis, um, drainage is more important ever. Um, our downtowns and our commercial districts that are, you know, a little bit older, um, they have the older infrastructure there. And so protecting that, those, those um assets for revenue is important. Without our tax on generating um buildings and farms and windmills and all these other things, uh, we couldn't do all the things that we do and not on from a miserable side of things. Um, like I said, that's a, that's a million dollars. The city of Alma, we're willing to put up, like we said, we've been talking about that all tonight, putting our skin in the game. Put a million dollars with that. It's a two million dollar project to do what we're looking to do there. Um, the design work to do those, uh, just for the engineering uh for those lots, the hundred and twenty-two thou, hundred and twenty-three thousand. Um, the Alma Downtown Development Authority is gonna put a hundred toward that. And then the city picking up the rest to see the design work done. Whatever the decisions are, that's fine. We only have so much money and there's, there's all these needs that are out there. Um, whatever we can get here, obviously will match. We're gonna be using our, our, our money, our um general fund monies and uh to get as much as we can done um for this. Um, the uh it's been a long time coming with uh what we've been doing in downtown. We were very fortunate in two thousand and seventeen with the Opera Block um project that the MEDC, you know, we helped fund the re, redevelopment of that block, of that block, but uh did put in some money toward um the parking lot in the back. We were able to do two parking lots there. We um also put in a electric car station, um charger station, uh, which is, I believe, one of only two in the, in the county at this point. Our goal, obviously, as we go forward with the other parking lots is to put the conduit in, not necessarily charging stations in at this moment, but the, those, the infrastructure there so we can put those in when needed. Um, just to be ready for the future. We all know that's, that's where they're headed with the, the vehicle situation across the country. So we'll be ready for that. But we do have two, two, uh, two stations downtown right now. From there, we have also, over the creative ways of getting parking lots, we've done uh the, the dental clinic, the Heritage in Alma Heritage Center. Uh, we did a land swap with them and gave up an old parking lot so they can move the building down. We built a parking lot off of Woodward Street. They paid half of that new parking lot. So they paid half of that. Downtown at the old State Street Plaza, which used to be the Dial-A-Ride, um, Alma Transportation Building. Um, that was an enterprise fund. We were able to put that, that parking lot back together. So we've done as, you know, a lot to try to pay for things um local. So we've done as, you know, a lot to try to pay for things locally. As we go forward, as we will be doing some projects with the parking lots anyway, we are committing our our money to do some of that stuff. But also this time around, which our community talked about in the eighties, and say, I wish they would now living here in this moment. We are going to be looking at some kind of a maintenance fund to ask the downtown to put toward. So not only are we asking for this money here, but we are also going to ask our merchants and those that live in the downtown. To, you know, pony up either a business improvement district or something along those lines. To at least put together some kind of a perpetual maintenance fund for that. The other portion of it is five hundred fifty thousand dollars is for our lead and galvanized investigation. And I don't want to take up any more time, you already have the the information there for the parking lots and I let Dave talk a little bit about. And you've heard about this from off Saint Louis, as all of us have talked about this this type of lead and and galvanized investigation stuff. So I'll let Dave talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, Eric. I'm Dave Ringel, Public Service Director for the City of Alma. And like Eric mentioned, I'm not going to bore you with all the boring details in the past. Most everybody knows about what we know as the lead copper law and rule mandate in two thousand eighteen that was established. And as of right now, there is still no funding for us to help to do the research replacement. Or any of the other ancillary work that's a part of the research and replacement of lead or galvanized lines within our municipality. City of Alma has approximately thirty-five hundred water customers and of those. We are required to investigate three hundred and fifty-six of these within the next year. So that's a very ambitious goal to do those three hundred and fifty-six. What that does is gives us a snapshot. Theoretically, it's a random sample for what customers have, that's be it. Commercial, residential, water users to find out what kind of services that they currently have. So what we have to do is a part of that, if you've you've probably heard before, but we have to dig up the road, find out what the connection to the water service is. Find out what the water service line is at the shut-off, both sides, municipal side, residential side. And then to also go into each house or building to find out what the service line is within three feet of the entrance to the structure. Part of your packet shows, it's not a very good one because when you look at the the distance back, it shows the red sites for all the ones we have to investigate. That's three hundred and fifty-six, so a lot of those small ones don't show up just because of the grand scale of the size of the city. What's infrastructure interesting for everybody in the room and anybody that might be paying attention, we talk about infrastructure. I know we talked to this board back in November, October, I think the number that the county had at one point was eight million. It's quite staggering how fast that can deplete just in a few months. So as we as voters all need to remember that when you talk about infrastructure, this is where it goes and how fast it can disappear. And yet all the needs that are still not going to be met with this, some are dire, some are things that we've been putting off for twenty, forty, fifty years. Hundred years. Some of these are new mandates that we have to meet and unfortunately, people talk about them, these are unfunded mandates. City of Alma right now is projecting we need to replace our water meters within the city. And if we don't get any kind of funding assistance, that's going to get pushed back. Those water meters that are currently in the city are twenty to twenty-five years old, their life expectancy is about fifteen to twenty. So that's why we're asking for this money to help offset this. For the three hundred and fifty-six that we've estimated for play for the research and replacements. We're roughly guessing about half of the services that we investigate will need to be replaced. That doesn't mean that they're lead, that means that they're galvanized. And you cannot prove that it was never connected to lead, that's how the law is written, so it's guilty until proven innocent. So we've based it on the fact of I look at the number of permits that have been pulled in the last thirty odd years for replacements based on what we've seen. During construction projects, I've got a project cost analysis sheet that we've attached, equipment and labor, hundred ninety-eight thousand. Site restoration, here we talk about opening up the streets to investigate what the connection to the water main is. Opening up the yards to find out what that service line or the shut-off is, the water service line on both sides. And into the house, the houses have actually just staffed time to look into that, but you have to put in the sand sub base. Gravel and asphalt back into the road when you've excavated that, there's at the curb stop. Most of the time you'll have to put at least two sidewalk squares back because you have to hydrox, we're going to try to hydro excavate these, but the sidewalks are. Collateral damage is a part of that because you can't undermine them. And then you have to put in sand and topsoil back in, there's a cost to that. Just and that's just in research. The total cost of the excavation and work, we've estimated about two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Estimated site cost per replacement is about five thousand. That number is probably about a year old with inflation, that number could be anywhere, probably five to six, probably more in the six range now, I'm guessing. Total cost for the replacements, if we're estimating close to half, it's about eight hundred ninety thousand, that's just for the three hundred and fifty-six that. We're going to investigate and you can see the total cost of the project that we have anticipated is one point, basically rounded up to one point two million. And the City of Alma is asking for five hundred and fifty thousand, pay half of this. When you look at the impacts, that's part of your sheet, so I'm not going to bore you. But what it does is gives you confidence into the supply system for the municipality, residents get peace of mind. We also have accurate information given to the State of Michigan for the condition of our water services. If you look at, maybe the question is why hasn't anything been done for the last fifty to hundred years, right up until the water crisis. Water lines for the municipalities from the curb stop to the house, that's where you shut their water off, if they don't pay or if they have to shut it off for any kind of reason for repair work. That was the homeowner's responsibility, but as of Flint, that now tells us that the municipalities or the supply system. Owns and maintains that line all the way two and three feet of the house, so. We have no records of anything from the curb stop back because since the beginning of the City of Alma, we that's not been our jurisdiction. But residents be assured of their drinking water system, ensure safety, it ensures confidence in that system. We also get a pretty good chunk out of the system to be replaced in the future. Like I said, we have about thirty-five hundred of these that will need to be investigated and or replaced. By twenty twenty-four is when they all have to be accounted for and a plan for remediation, so. There's any other questions?
State of Michigan just come up with a, I I thought I heard four point eight billion for lead pipes?
There's been talk about it, I've heard a lot of talk in the last two to three years. What has been coming down the pike, this is what I can say right up until the last week. That money that's going to be allocated is all going to be through loans unless something is different. But from what I understand, municipalities or supply systems can ask for loans and hit the money and then they'd have to pay that back. From what I understand, there's been no grants, that word grant is universally thrown out there, but it's not, they're through low interest loans. And we cannot special assess, due to the nature of the law, we cannot special assess nor charge the homeowners for any of the work. As far as the research or replacement, that has to be borne by the municipality. But like I said, my information is right up to the last week.
My understanding of that was it was going to be a million dollars come to the state, basically that was going to, I I was waiting to see how they're going to distribute that. I didn't hear you talk about loans. Really, I want to tell you what I thought about is that we have some money out for pipes. And my thought was, I have the money in the bank for pipes, we have access to the money for pipes and if the state's going to give it out. Take away from you getting any from them, will that, would would you would you take their money and 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 use our and bring ours back? Or whatever, to redistribute or whatever, you know, because our money will still have to be accounted for. It's not like you just take the money and run, you'll still have to report to Chris to what you did with it. That type of thing, because we have to report to whoever gave us this.
Yes, make sure that's being spent where it's said it's going to be spent.
So I think there's something we ought to all look at close to to see what's going to happen with this four point eight. If it's going to be somehow distributed the way, I guess I could say, I've been watching it close and I haven't heard anything about loans, but I haven't heard any way they're going to give it out either.
Yes, like I said, my and that's what a lot of people think is it's going to be getting out in grants, things like that. I sincerely wish and I hope that's the case because this is serious money that we're talking about, serious time. Talk about staff, no one has the staff time to do this, that's where I'm really crunching right now is how is this going to get done, but.
How would you do it if you had the money?
Would you have the money? To do the replacements, contractors, to do the investigation, us in-house, the reason why I would do the investigations in-house. That ensures the accuracy of the data. If I contract this out, I'm going to spend probably estimating right now, two and a half to three times the amount of money that I would have for internal staff. Just because they have to make money to do what they're doing and I know what consulting fees are. But for the replacement work, if that were to, when that does get done, I talked to our commission within the last month. They're looking at an option, this is probably the most user-friendly option, it's like what we did in Stormwater Diversion Project. We'd have three pre-selected contractors, the prices would be the same, whoever did the work, they'd be all agreed on the price per lineal foot for the for the pipe. Cost for the connection to the house, cost for the plumbers, because I want to make sure that they have plumbing inspections done and they're done by a licensed plumber. So you have three contractors to pick from, you can pick them based on however you like them, but it's it's confidence. And if somebody's coming to your house, it would be nice that you have a choice in who you pick, trying to be as user-friendly as we can. That's all it would go, contractors would actually perform the replacements.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and then next up, airport, Eric, are you handling that?
Thank you again, the Gracie Community Works was asked if we could put something in to request some of the funds. Obviously, like Dave just mentioned, when we heard that we were going to have close to eight million dollars to to put into good projects across our county. Who knew that this was going to be, here we are, you know, with the last million and a half. So anyway, what we've put together from the airport side of things, we look at things that can't be funded by our federal and state entitlement dollars. Every year, the airport is entitled to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Airport that eligible. M dot aeronautic and Federal Aviation Administration guidelines. I see the priorities are pavements, lighting, then course hangers. The project we're currently working on and we've been saving for a while and finally got to a point where. That threshold of our payments are in good enough shape, we didn't, they didn't have to be worked on right now. And our lighting system is good enough that it can get us through, so we have to replace it with a new L D system. Or a new fuel farm. The reason that's not a big priority for the for the the federal and the state level is its revenue generating, which is kind of an asset we're on. Because we're always trying to find ways to to fund the airport without, you know, taking as much of a contribution as possible. So we're in the process right now, design work is done and should be having contracts soon for actual on development. And like it says in paperwork there, we are hoping to get that done in this construction season. Most likely with lead times for for tanks and all those sort of things, we're probably looking at next spring before it can be put in. The reason why we're putting the new, you know, fuel farm, obviously, the one that's out there was original to the airport nineteen sixty. It's it's done well for us, the tanks themselves are fine, but we did have a a link from. The avgas to the pump, it's all self-contained and alarms go off if something starts to leak. It went off, it was shut down and that's been almost a year and a half, going on two years since we had to shut that off. And since then, we've had a tanker truck sitting there for for avg fuel, which is not convenient because you have people flying in and out all the time. And they have to call someone to meet or to tank. That all said, what's that's coming online, hopefully in the next, obviously, like I said, by next spring at the latest. But then we'll have the issue of the old tank sitting, can't let that stuff sit there, has to be gone, has to be taken out. That that removal is not eligible whatsoever, federal and state level, so. We think that's about a forty thousand dollars, maybe a fifty thousand dollar removal. So that's our top priority, if, you know, all things being equal, that has to be done, it's not just a, you know, just getting rid of an old piece of equipment, but it's an environmental thing too. The rest of the 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 bullet items that we had here were from a user survey that our manager put out for the. The users of the airport, belt system out there, so it draw when it draws up water, it's 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 rusty. We've been doing a lot of tree removal out there, that's always an issue for for D A airports. We still have a few trees that are located on private property, but within our easements of our approach path. So if we had to hire some people to go in on a property and take these down. The the areas that we have removed, it'd be great if we could remove those stumps and just kind of mow grass as opposed to. Scrub trees growing up and getting back in the same issues that we currently have. Taxi streets, we have put some maintenance off on those that take you your your. Runway to your apron, to your to your hangar, those could use some some. The improvement of the drainage system, we had the county drain commissioner did do a bunch of cleaning years ago. But we have many ditches that are on site that could use some help. The terminal itself, it's very, it's very utilitarian, it gets the job done, it was built in sixty-eight, obviously. If we could get some money and use some some small nights of these there, lighting, painting, furniture, windows, electricity upgrades. The. Hangers that are owned by the airport, those being the kind of those yellow ones that you see blue and white, they're owned by the the airport commission. Those could use some paint, we could do some electrical upgrades. For lighting and all sorts of things would be helpful, so obviously, we tried to keep that request small, that one was for two twenty-five, not knowing what all this stuff would cost. Like I mentioned, the real the real need out there, once we get the the fuel farm would be to remove all those tanks. So I know everything is is tight, but that's what we were able to come up with.
Eric, what would you think, what would you think the request would be if we were just talking fuel farm and tank removal? Just those things, what do you think the cost would be?
Well, fuel farm is is ninety percent covered by our state and federal dollars. The rest of it will come from our fund balance at the airport fund balance, we'll pay for our our share, so we don't need anything from this. But the tank removal itself is not eligible, so I can't use federal entitlements. I'd have to use our our fund balance that we have in the airport, which we try to keep for capital projects. And it's going to help us get through as we discuss how we reorganize the airport. But that is the need and and our our estimate was probably, like I said, forty to fifty thousand for removal. And and obviously, then we want to make sure there, we have some testing money there to test, make sure nothing was leached. And so we have a clean bill of health when we move off off-site.
I have some questions for you. What about, I've heard that you're looking into solar panels?
Yes, we've kicked, there's been two firms that have reached out to us over the last few years. One. Reached out to us and and sent us like a draft lease agreement with that. I don't know how serious they really were about, because they have to, they have to get a a number of acres to make that work. But it is possible, we've talked to the state and and they're open to that of, obviously, you got to do the studies of. Of glare and all those things that have to happen, but it is possible and if you can get enough of it out there. It it could make the airport itself sufficient.
Does it look like it's down the, I mean, does it look like it might be possible?
Yeah, the the, there's about four, about three different layers for it and another lease, they. The the lease would hold the land for a period of up to five years, if they're not doing any development, they were paying sixty dollars an acre. But you could still also lease that that acreage out to, you know, ag, which we don't get a lot out there for because it's not really great farming land. That's why they put the airport there, it's flat, it's not very good farming, it's mostly sand and loam, soils, yeah, just does not, there's some density to it. So we could still do those things with that, but you lock yourself into a five-year and that was one of the things that when we looked at that that moment. And they kind of came to us last minute, they go, well, we need a decision within like two months and that's not something you make a decision on in two months for a five-year commitment. So but it's still something out there that I think is definitely doable. It seems solar is gaining a lot of of traction across the state, so.
And then also, I've got a paper here, it says way to close the gap and it says, do you have one million four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars? On hand now or you don't?
No, no, that's probably with our depreciation and value of assets, we are right around four hundred thousand dollars. An actual fund balance cash.
Four hundred thousand?
Around four hundred thousand.
Okay.
But that's something that worked really. But that's something that we worked really hard to put together over the last few, you know, last few years, so that like we've just seen the prices of everything that's gone up, that yes, my fuel tanks are, they're probably going to hit probably four twenty, four fifty. Thank gosh, the the federal and state pays for that.
Right, I I guess what I'm hearing is you're saying a critical fifty thousand would really help you out.
Because that's that's
Cover that.
Very important, that getting those tanks removed properly and then doing the testing to make sure everything is is good to go, that's it's important.
Eric, I got a question on the airport, it's kind of like probably from a year ago. We had a number of folks here from the airport, they're ready to give and they were ready to turn it over, like they hired an attorney to do the paperwork, was my understanding, and I kept telling representative on the airport, Mr. Lerman, that we don't know how to run an airport, and and I I would, I'd be happy to take it out of Sam Smith or or Gresham County, the guy that know how to run it. You got at least, if we had to put ten twenty thousand dollars into it to keep it here every year, it's well worth it, it's well worth to have here, but I believe in it very much. My concern is when they started talking about solar panels and being able to be self-sufficient, all of a sudden, we didn't hear anything from the airport anymore, but you guys were within weeks of, you hired an attorney to how to turn this over to us. And 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 I had mentioned that I was not going to vote for it, basically, because I mean, that airport is like catching a dog, dog chasing a car, what are you going to do with it when you catch it, you know, because I don't know nothing about it, and nobody here does. And so I I I don't know where we're all at with this airport, turning into county, or you now you're thinking about running it yourselves, if you if you can get some solar in there, and I think solar is going to come to our community, I think, wrap these windmills up, and probably these are the kids are going to probably be talking about solar here in six or eight months. I say kids, excuse me. I'm just amazed how young they are. But I I just think that, you know, for a while, it was like, we got it, we got to do something, you guys got to take this over, and and now all of a sudden, we not heard nothing about it probably a year, yeah?
No, I've still open to whatever makes the airport better, because obviously, we've been working on a shoestring with that since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Whatever you can, because right now, it needs, it needs more, it needs investment.
I I pop up, let's see what it looks like, and and, you know, and the county did a study on on doing this and how to to run it. I'll be honest with you, it didn't really tell me how to run an airport, but it, you know, I just, I think we need to somebody's got to get their hands around it, you know, whether it's going to be this authority, or whether it's going to be the airport, or the county, or, you know, who's going to do that, and but I think it's a viable thing for our county, you know, somebody's got to continue that thing on.
You'll never get another one, they'll never
And I I hear great things about the length of it, I know nothing about, I give a
Very fortunate with that, yeah.
There's a lot of Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to
But I I think we got a big airport, it's purely to lots of folks around and stuff like that, and so I I think it's a great thing for our community, I think it's helped in a lot of our big development stuff, guys flying in. You know, these folks here with lots of stuff, and so I think it's something our community needs, we just got to get our hands around about who's going to run, who's going to manage it, and and if it's going to be the county demands, we got to get figured out how it does, and we we got to have an airport administrator or something, or a part-time one or something, many guys knows how much you charge the landing airplane there or something, I exactly, I just buy a ticket and take it to the window. It's all I know.
It's not, it's not easy, that's why you have, like even, say, Detroit, run by an authority. And they're always trying to find ways to make sure they're solvent, it's not a, you got it, it goes, so. But GA airports are a little, are obviously a little bit different, and the one, I guess, say, you could say positive thing that the rest of us have to deal with, is where are you going to find your capital, your monies for to do your capital things, at least you have that money coming in every year. They have only done one hundred and fifty for a good long while, it'd be nice if they bumped that with inflation, but it's, we've been very fortunate, that's how we've been able to keep the airport at least opened from a legal standpoint through the M dot Aeronautics and and federal administration, so.
But I think if there's some opportunity for solar and and doing some farming out there, you know, that'll offset a lot of the cost of this operation. And I think it's cheap to keep an airplane there, from what I hear, I mean, I've just talked to them in Owasso and some other places, I got some buddies that fly some airplanes. I don't ride with them, but but I just think that I think we're pretty reasonable, I guess, our airport is to stuff there, and and I don't know, we're I just think somebody's got to have a get a handle on that thing, you know?
No, and like, I sent John and I, we just discussed on it this week, but it's it's going to be, it's not an easy thing to get your hand around, because obviously, no one wants to spend any more money, because we have all these other needs that we have in our communities and in county. Any little bit that we send down there takes away from some results, so that's why we've been, and you know, and I'm sure we started hearing a little bit about that, you know, a year or so ago, that we do spend very little from a from a true dollar standpoint toward the airport, from direct municipal contribution. But to really to really do what we need to do out there, we, that does need to to go up. Before two thousand and nine, when we went to the authority, because you know, funding sources and, you know, the windmills hadn't been to the county yet. The, all the municipal contributions from the city of Alma and the county were a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, well, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars bought a lot more in the early two thousands than it does now. And we're working with, you know, we were working with sixty four thousand dollars a year municipal contribution, so.
Well, I think that was, you know, how this all started was the township wanted to pull out, is my understanding, out of the authority, that
That's where we started for that discussion, just discussion part, yeah.
And somewhere we got within a month of signing up, the county was going to run this thing, I mean, I they had a lawyer hired and they were ready
I don't know if we're that, we're that close, but
It is, they had the paperwork drawn up. Okay, that's all I had.
No, no problem, appreciate it.
One of the things I want to bring up, the thing about the airport is I'm I'm also taking a flight from Alfa, that you can come from four different directions to town, is that right?
Yeah, we have a
I only came from two different directions.
We have a north, east, west mile runway, which is rare for some size of airport like we but we also have a thirty two hundred foot crosswind airport runway. A typical airport like us would never get something like that, but when we had refinery here, they had enough pull, that that's how they got that crosswind runway put in. Obviously, we had plans in the past where we put the rest of that taxiway, the rest of the way toward the west. But obviously, when you're trying to keep everything open and running, any pavement you add adds, obviously, the long ongoing maintenance, plus snow removal and all the other things along with that, so. We've pulled back from all, you know, some of the grandness that people had envisioned, but that's that's because refinery is no longer, and that was the big driver back then.
But also, if the other townships hadn't pulled out, you still had that money coming in, probably wouldn't have been in the situation that you're in today, right?
We we wouldn't, we wouldn't be discussing in what what's the proper best way to manage and function the airport, yes.
So it was a lack of, a lack of this money not coming in, made a huge difference.
Yeah, it's a big difference, well, you know, when you're talking about a sixty eight thousand dollar contribution from all the municipalities, and you start pulling out eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. It doesn't sound like a lot, because we're talking millions of dollars here today, but it is a big, it is a big deal, and then it comes down to the fairness when we talk about taxpayers, that is it more of a, should be more of a countywide, or, you know, functioning airport, or, and traditionally, it was a fifty fifty split between the county and the city of Alma, because traditionally, the airport was in Alma, and that's how it came to be.
Alrighty, anybody have anything else?
No problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, City of Ithaca.
Jamie had a a committee meeting before his meeting, so he had to leave in your packet, he's requesting a hundred and ten thousand dollars to offset the cost of a tour vac truck. They had planned on getting about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for that truck, they planned on buying a new truck. The problem is, the part of the truck just broke that Jamie didn't feel comfortable with selling that truck for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, it just, it it wasn't going to be fair to whoever's going to purchase it. So that's, he's asking for ARPA money for that, help help him for that replacement cost, that's all.
Truck costs more, probably at one ten.
Close to four hundred thousand dollars.
He was He's going to sell this truck for one ten, it's not worth it, okay.
Whatever parts broke is not good, you can't just simply I think it's a you guys had no more for tonight, too. But he just, he just said, excuse me, but I have to, they have a council meeting tonight at seven o'clock.
Isn't it the type of truck like Alma has that yeah, yeah, it's like it's a super vacuum cleaner.
Big truck with the hose on the front and a big tank on the
Because the the water line broke in front of my house, you know, and they're screwing around with the backhoe trying, and this truck pulls up and just sucks everything out.
It was cool.
Yeah, it was cool.
You don't get collateral damages.
Alrighty, anyone have any questions on that?
No.
Hey, Fulton Township.
Denise Rossman, I'm Fulton Township Supervisor, and I have submitted a request from Fulton Township, we're a very diverse township. And so therefore, my requests are diverse, and township would be very honored if any or all of these requests were received. So by all means, I'll just kind of briefly go over each one. The first request was the S and A software for general accounting, accounts payable. As well as a point and pay addition for us to be able to handle credit cards. We have a complicated system right now with twelve different accounts that we handle, and our current accounting software is not very conducive to handling all of these twelve accounts, because in double entry accounting, trying to do an entry, you have to close out of one account in order to get into the other, and so it slows everything down as quick. Plus, our utility billing for our three separate sewer systems, we have on Microsoft Excel, which is a different type of accounting software. And then we handle our taxes on BSNA tax software, so in trying to get the three to work together, we have to manually add in numbers in some of the different accounting systems. So our audit the last several years keeps telling us that we need to purchase a new double entry accounting software system, and and the board just does not felt like we can handle the expense of it. So as you see, the cost of that would be thirty eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. So that would be a first request that we have. Second request we have is the Pompeii sewer system back in the nineteen nineties from Gresham County. And each one of the residents that live in the village there has a septic tank, and their lines run to this drain field, sand filter system that we have. And the driveway is about eighteen hundred feet that we have to take along a farmer's field in order to get back there, and so, of course, this time of year, and other times of the year, it gets so muddy, muddy, and our four-wheel drive trucks are in deep ruts, being pulled one way or another to get back there, and then to get back, and as far as getting additional contractors back there with extra work. It's asking a lot for them to take their equipment back there on that road. So our request is to there is a bid that we have had, that someone has given us a bid, it would cost us seventy thousand to get that road in a shape where we could actually use it without any problems. Then our third request, we have one of the sewer lift stations that we have in our sewer five system is on a road that tank that's highly erodible, and we have our sewer infrastructure lift station that is about nine feet from the water, and so we're needing to do a seawall in order to protect our infrastructure there. And so we have a bid that's been given to us for that forty five thousand five hundred. Our fourth request would be a sixteen acre parcel of land that we would be able to purchase that could potentially give us some space to put in a third sewage lagoon pond. Currently, we have, we're members of the Perrington Sewer Authority Board, and we have two lagoons right now that is handling the sewage for Middleton, Perrington, and Oliver Rainbow Lake. And we've talked for several years about upgrading that and adding another lagoon pond. But land-wise, we don't have the space in which to do that, so the sixteen acre parcel adjoins right up to that, and it's also on the backside of our Payne Cemetery. So that piece of property could be used both to expand our cemetery, and it could help us to provide an area to put in that third lagoon pond to help accommodate the continued increase building that we have on Rainbow Lake. Next request that I have was actually Payne and Fulton Center Cemetery, we have five cemeteries in our township, two of which are large and still active. Each one has about seven or eight sections in those, and we have a lot of old trees because the cemeteries are old, and we have put together some bids, both cemetery, either or cemetery, and also the drives that need to be upgraded and repaired. And cemeteries are not normally financially supporting, so the expense of those has taken a lot from general fund different years for us, so any help that we could get with that would be very much appreciated. Cemetery, just pre-removal would be sixty eight very, for the tree removal would be sixty thousand. Payne Cemetery Drive would be twenty three thousand to upgrade those drives, and the Fulton Center Cemetery Drives would be thirty three thousand five hundred. Some sixth quest is I'm sure you've heard or seen our newspaper reports recently about what is going on in our township. We here and again get complaints that we don't publicize our meetings well enough, or other things that are going on in the township. We put everything on our website, we try to get it in the Gresham County Herald. But being on a main highway, we've really seriously thought the last few years it would be well worth it to invest in an electronic sign to put along the highway, so that we could inform people that are passing by every day, when our signs are, or when our meetings are, when it's time for an upcoming election. You know, all of those different communications, and we think it would be a huge communication piece to the public. And the cost of that would be seventeen thousand three hundred. And the last and final request would be for a new well at our Payne Cemetery. Payne Cemetery actually is kind of a historic place where in that area of the township, some of the first settlers from Gresham County came. And the well that is there currently is in the south older part of the cemetery. And the two newer sections do not actually have water lines. And we've been struggling with some well problems the last few years, so if we were able to put in a new well near where our pole building is, we could add the tubing to be able to run the water in the new sections, and then connect that with the older sections. So and currently, we are supposed to, with our second ARPA fund payment, to receive a total over the two years of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And some of the uses that we are looking to use those on are, we have an asset management plan that is currently in the works on our two sewer systems, which would be Middleton and Rainbow Lake. And so we're wanting to hold a little bit back for that, to wait and see what type of things are discovered in that, because those, the Rainbow Lake system alone is forty plus years old. And then also, our township hall was built in nineteen seventy eight and still has the original flooring. We have some major We have some major problems with the main entrance that needs to be replaced, the door frame and doors and possibly a security entrance. And then also, as I mentioned, the flooring, we need bathroom updates in the hall. The kitchen probably as well. And we've talked about the parking lot needs to have some work. It was only ever half asphalted and the rest was gravel and and some of that is cracking and needs to have some work done to it. And plus we have a nineteen seventy two backhoe that we've been having some issues with that we use for opening and closing our graves that we may have to replace. So we have quite a few things that we're looking at for the current year. But again, I appreciate your time and even just one of these to be considered would be very greatly appreciated. So thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, you just just hit on a good point. If we would consider one of them, which one would it be?
I have, I kind of had them. I don't know if you did get your copies, but.
Yeah, it wasn't in the packet.
Okay, sorry. So I kind of listed a in order of priorities. So software would be a huge and and the driveway access to sewer, those are, those are our first two that would probably be the most important that you could choose from. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So then you said you had a proposal.
Yes. One of the things I'd like to do though, too, is kind of go around to each one of the commissioners and you know, do you have some kind of a thought? I have a thought. I'd like to do my thought, but I'd like to also know yours too. Would you like me to go first? Okay. I'm going to stand up because I have some papers I want to pass out to the audience here. And I'll just take this with me. This one for you. For George. Okay, first of all, I want to say that I also sleep over this. Mostly because I feel that everybody in this county is very important. Everything that you do is important for the whole community. And I also feel that this was years ago or ten years ago, we all would not be sitting if we didn't have wind turbines, we would never. These are things that just would never get done. But because of the wind turbines, we have had a, we're all sitting here today because we do have money that comes into the county. So what I did, I did some research of things that I'd had. And the other thing too, there's everything in here equally is important. Whether you're asking for sixty thousand or a million dollars, it's all very important. It's important to the whole community. And I think the biggest thing too that I think about as your commissioner, longest running commissioner on the board now. Proud of that twenty two years. But because the fact that I work for you and you are the ones who pay my, my paycheck. And you're also the ones that pay for the courthouse. You pay for a lot of things in the community. And every day you work hard. You you buy a home, you pay taxes on it, but you know that money is going to be used for other things that are important for your community. These are things that are important to me and to you both. Now, I also thought about the commissioners because each one of us think different. Each one of us have a different idea of what we want to do, how we want to progress on this. And one of the other things that was important, we had given some of the money away earlier. And mostly because it was projects that needed to start a few months ago. And and I thought that everything again is very important. And whether you're sitting here tonight, somebody comes in a month from now, it would still be equally as important. So I gave it some thought and one of the things, the reason I passed out this paper to you. Now, this money is back in two thousand twelve is when the wind turbines for the community. And it was two thousand seventeen that this paper was put together. And it was Don Schur. He was, he had come to the, it's called the county township meeting that usually meets out at Pine River Township. And when I read this, I was so excited because I, at that time, I had talked to Jerry from Wheeler Township. And he had asked me, how much money did we get from each wind turbines? And I said, I don't know. And he says, well, how much has come in? I said, I don't know. So when I got this paper, I thought, wow, now I do know. And this is the reason I passed it out because I'm sure that a lot of you guys don't know how much money has come into the county already. So when you look at this, there was back in two thousand twelve, they did two, two different. Tell you what it is, two different projects. The first project was a hundred and thirty three wind turbines. The second one was fifty five and then they also put substations. Now, as you read down through this, you'll see that the first one was Grasset County wind. That was eight point five million dollars that came into the county. That would come into the county. The townships would get two point seven four million. And twelve point three million go to the local schools. That's for one. Second, BB renewable energy. Three point nine five million dollars came into Grasset County. One point seven eight million came into the local townships. And four point nine eight million came into the schools. That was on the second project. And then you had the substitutions. Three hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and thirty one dollars came into Grasset County. Eighty seven thousand, I'm just going to say eighty seven thousand to the local townships. And one point seven million dollars to the schools. I'm going to tell you the schools. It made a huge, huge difference for those schools. A huge difference and the townships and it made a huge difference in the county. Time we could get wages. We could hire people, start fixing things in our community. Now, when I started twenty two years ago, I sat in the same seat. There was a young girl that sat here and she's, I need my job. About that girl to this day, she goes, I'm a, I'm a mother alone, I have children and I need this job. We still voted to to not have her here, but not no longer afford her. Two to three people were let go. At that time, about every year, the first few years I was on the board. It was the wind turbines that changed Grasset County. Now, a lot of, some people like them, some people don't, but the bottom line is without that money, we wouldn't be sitting here today with some of the needs that we have. And the other thing that I thought about for probably a week now, lost sleep over it maybe is that how can we be fair? And the only way to be fair is to take. And we still have some of the money that came in from the, I wrote that down, so I'd be sure to say it right. But also there's more money. This is the first hundred and eighty eight winter when it first came in. There's now closer, going to be soon, four hundred wind turbines in Grasset County. So there's still money out there coming in and also wind turbines is going to be built. And my proposal is to take, not sit here tonight and say, okay, we're going to vote on each one of these. Yes, you can have, get it. No, you can't. But to sit down and do a plan where each one of yous will get pretty much what you need. For instance, the fire department. Pretty much you need that money. I mean, there's no ands and ifs about it. Without it, we're going to be running around with two twenty five year old trucks. And there's, there's some of this is things that you want to do for the community, such as Brackenridge. By putting this, redoing this. It's what? Billion. And it's going to bring in people, it's going to spend money, it's going to pay more taxes coming in to the community. And I look around and some things will be fixed, like the animal shelter or roads. These are things that need to be fixed. Now, what I'd like to see the commissioners do instead of voting on this one by one is to sit down and not only use the money from the A A, this is ARP. The money that we got from the federal government and also start looking at the turbine, wind turbine money that's going to be coming in. Every time we pay tax, it's wind turbine money that's coming in. I think that the county. I think that we've been really generous with just the courthouse here. We've done a lot of remodeling, a lot of little extra things that we needed to do. I've been on the board for, I've seen a lot of stuff. We've just put new carpet in here. I would rather have seen the money go to you than to put new carpet in here. Not that we don't need it, it was nice to get it. But you know, we've got to start weighing out what is really important to us. Is it more important to have carpet or have maybe a new truck? Or is it more important to take and give some money to the fire department? Or give money to the airport? Or give money to Brackenridge that will bring more money in? So that's why I asked to do a, or to get up and talk to yous tonight. I also I am, I'm going to be truthful. We get in arguments in here, pretty, pretty serious arguments. And the thing that I always bring up is that I work for you guys. Ones that pay the bill. You're the ones that bring in the tax money. And this is all yours. This courthouse is yours. All of this, anything that has to do with the county belongs to the citizens of this county. And so back to the wind turbines. We have two people here in our audience this evening that's with Wind Energy. No. Wind Energy, obviously the wrong one. But you know yourself, the difference between the last ten years and the next ten years is the last ten years, we're going to pay some of that money back in taxes or back into to the wind turbine people because it was what I estimated wrong. But from here forward, since you're sitting here, we won't have that mistake now, will we?
You're asking a question they can't answer. They're not a tax appeal board.
Yeah, to Sam's point, Wind Energy is the developer of these weekend speeches, have tax tables. So I don't have a direct answer for you, but I certainly appreciate you.
But I mean, and I don't think it's going to be, I've talked to Jerry from Wheeler Township and he said that it had notice that it's not going to be as bad as what they thought it was going to be. But also we've been able to save money here in the county. And we've been spending money and I just think that now is the time that the five of us commissioners on this board really do something extremely important. Important thing that we might ever do as being county commissioners. And that one thing is to sit down by one and forget about where the money, the money's going to come from general fund because all the money that comes into the county goes into the general fund. It's that different than if we do that five year plan when we sit down and say, hey, we're going to give a new truck to the animal control next in two thousand twenty five and we're going to give this person this in two thousand, you know, whatever, twenty six. It's not any different than if we sit down and talk about the next two years, how we can fund some of these different things that are needed. And it, and it's like they say, the fire department, everybody benefits from that. Everybody benefits really from the animal shelter. People take cats and dogs out of there. And I've been to Perrington. It's a nice little town. And they need to, these are things that our community needs. And they wouldn't be here today if they didn't need them. And we might not agree on every single thing. But we can come to some kind of a conclusion of some kind of amount of money that we can give to each person. And how, where is it going to come from? It will come from the wind turbine money. That if those people didn't put those wind turbines in, we have nothing now. We would not, we, we would be sitting here to figure out how we're going to pay our bills and who we're going to let go. And we wouldn't be given raises because when I first came on, we, we didn't talk about giving anybody a raise. There was no money to give a raise. Now we give a raise every year. But anyway, that's what I had to say. I'm not the best speaker in the world. I'm a little shy in fact. But if anybody would like to ask me a question, I'd be glad to answer it. Would you commissioners like to ask me any questions?
You know, you're on a big thing about people getting raises. We have a hard time keeping policemen here because they can go to work in the city of Elma and make more money. You know, so you have to compete. Oh, you have to compete with.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Pay somebody ten dollars an hour and grab a police car around and 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 take his life in his own hands or whatever. You can't pay people who can go and work somewhere else who's a specialty person here that is a court reporter, is a clerk assistant or whatever, you know, they, they do all this. You can't pay them less than what the prevailing wage.
No, and I'm, I'm for you though, too.
But what I'm saying is that you're, you're still thinking we can pay these folks ten dollars an hour. Or twenty dollars an hour. And when you look at windmill money. Some of these windmills have been here twenty years. And so they're pretty much, half of them are probably.
Been here two years, haven't they?
Oh, no, some of them have been here a long time. I mean, my in-laws had one. I don't know what the first year was, but it's got to be at the flat rate depreciation.
Two thousand twelve is when they.
In energy, put it in when you first come years ago. How long was that?
Wasn't two thousand twelve. So it's right here on the paper. Two thousand eleven.
Those ten years? Yeah, okay. So it's been ten years, but a lot of them are right. They're, they're depreciating out. We're in a lawsuit. We're involved in a multi-level action lawsuit to say that we're going to, we're going to be closed. I have no idea. Nobody's decided on.
Bottom line, like I said, though, Sam, is if they didn't come, if they hadn't come, where would we be today?
But that's got.
I have had that.
This money.
That's what I'm saying.
Do with these grants. That's got nothing to do with to sit here and say the county will accept no more windmill money. We'll just give it away to everybody.
No, I'm just saying that we're only talking, I think, around seven million or less. Three million we have really here.
But part of that operates our company. Part of that pays our salary into our general fund.
No, I'm talking about the money, I'm talking about the money that we've, that we've gotten from.
Got nothing to do with windows. This, this ARP money has got nothing to do with windows. Talking income that comes to the county and comes to fire departments, comes to schools, comes to anything. Comes to MSU, comes to, everybody gets a piece of that.
Okay, let me tell you this, though. Between those three.
City, it comes to everybody.
If you add the three, they come to the county was fourteen million. Fourteen million dollars came to the county since two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen. If you read this, the dates are on there.
Question is, what did you do with?
If, if we weren't here, it would.
What did you do with it? You were here sitting here for twenty.
What I'm saying is this, a little bit, I'm sure that we'll take in maybe another fourteen million or right around fourteen million, I would think. Let's take four million of that and fix some of the things that are due in the county. But the other thing is too, and I don't know if anybody was here at the time. I used to go to the meetings when Don Schur was there and Nicole Frost. And the big selling point of the wind turbines was that money would come back into the community and be put into, would take care of things that needed to be done in the county, such as talked about sports conflicts to build that for the kids. And that was, and they even talked about where they would even put it. And that's okay. You know, these, sometimes things, dreams don't happen. But what I'm saying, these are not dreams. These are need accessible things that we need to have in our community is. And I mean, some of these things are probably a little bit. And, I mean, some of these things are probably a little bit, we don't really, I mean, if they don't get it, it's not going to be the end of the world, but why not put a little bit of money back into this? I'm not saying that we should give somebody, if they're asking for five hundred thousand dollars, maybe give three hundred thousand dollars. But you give a little something to everybody, maybe take a seven million dollars down to maybe five million dollars. But let's least help, let's help everybody that we can help. And people are going to walk away with a lot better feeling about us commissioners caring about all of the, all of the county and not just the courthouse. But I'm saying this, I'm saying let's give it a try. You know, we might not.
You haven't given us a plan. Tell me your plan. We sit down and say, okay, we're going to get X amount of dollars from windmills this year. Say we get two million dollars from windmills. So the money comes to the county, Chris doesn't budget that in to operate, doesn't budget that in to pay the bills, to hire policemen, to hire stuff, to replace equipment. You talk about, it's too bad we put this carpet in. Have you been in the courthouse upstairs? I was just up there a week ago, the damn ceiling and stuff is peeling off the top of it.
I know.
It was one of my things saying, here we got this beautiful building up there and the ceiling is falling off. So if we have all this money, how come nobody, how come this ceiling wasn't repaired? I mean, I looked.
It's a priority, it's a priority.
We had this window had been leaking stuff here, we had this all repaired, it was thousands of dollars. We had to have a guy come in and they had it fixed once and once it was right, we had a guy come in and tear it all apart and redo it by hand. You know, and we paid thousands of dollars so the building didn't fall down. Now, this room right here, I mean, it was leaking.
I know, I remember what it was.
And.
So what are you proposing to do?
I'm proposing we distribute this money right here. I don't know how any of this has anything to do with windmill or operating the county. I mean, you're talking about, you've, you know, you brought up the truck. You voted no on the budget because we had a truck put in for the county. Tom requested a truck. We, we have a plan that we lay out, things capital improvements, two, three years down the road is going to be needed. We look at that as a budget. Tom put in a thing for a truck next year?
Yes.
Next year.
Last year.
Capital improvements this year. So we have a budget, look at the capital improvements, could not make our commissioner understand, he's not getting a truck this year, he's getting it next year. Why don't you want him to have a truck next year?
Because last year.
Because he didn't come and pick up a cat of one of my friends.
Nope.
That's what it was, you said that right here.
You had a truck last year.
You voted no on a multimillion-dollar budget.
Because I asked about it. And I've got, I'll show you in the budget, where it says fifty-eight thousand.
I've got the receipt back to the office.
Okay, that'll be interesting. I would love to see it because.
But I, I don't want to discuss, I, I think we just need to get back to this. These folks have come back.
They've come here and they've said a long time to have a decision.
I'll stop here and what, and. Didn't want to say this, but it's a great campaign speech, Jan. It's a great campaign speech.
Yeah, they always accuse me of things when I, when I.
I, I really want to get back to talking to these people here about.
I think that all these people in this room are adults. And they came here knowing they're not going to get everything they wanted. They can count, they can add. These, these people are all very smart people. They know the situation before they even got here. Right? It's up to us to try to do it as fairly as we can. Okay? I'm sorry, Jan. I, I believe you think you've got the right idea. I don't, I, I don't espouse that because windmills have been God-sent for this county. I'll agree with that a hundred percent. But there's many townships that have gotten the windmill money. And they've done really well with it. The townships that are really here right now, a lot of the townships, they're just starting to get windmill money, or they're never going to get windmill money. We've got, we've got townships on the west side of the county that haven't even come here to ask for anything and they don't even get any windmill money. All right, so this pile of money that the government just generously give to us all, and you're paying it by ten percent inflation today, but this is the task that we've been, we've been put forth, a task of the county commissioners to distribute seven point nine million dollars.
And I said, let's add a couple of million from.
Some, it's not even the task to do that. The task was, they give us the money. And the bottom line is, when they first give us the money, they had so tight of restrictions on it, you had to show what you were going to do with it, you had to fit in the mix to use it. And now they've lifted the restrictions.
Right.
So we've decided to say, let's fix our buildings, let's fix our stuff out of our money, and let's give the rest away. And that's what we're doing. You know, we had, we had seven million bucks, we're down to three point something. We wanted to put a million and a half away for Rainy Day Fund, we got one point, whatever it is.
One point eight.
Eight dollars to give away.
Yep.
And, and now the relief is, is that federal government doesn't put a lot of strings on it. We still got to explain what we're doing with it. I mean, if he give you fifty bucks, you got to tell Chris what he's done with it because we got to explain what we did with that fifty dollars. And so that's how that works. But the restraints were tough, the first part, in the first part. Because cities seen it, you had to use it for certain things. It was just, you could not. I talked to a township and mine had said, this is how you do it. You make an economic deal, you fix up, you get it, they don't even have a bathroom in their township, all they have elections. And I said, you can do this, this, and this with your money, we'll help maybe fund some of that. Rent it out and have a baby shower there. So you have some, generate some income, you know, for twenty-five bucks, you can have it, whatever. That wouldn't qualify. They're not here. They're not here when we can give it to them. And we got a bathroom in the township, you know, and it's. I said to them, if I'm in a wheelchair and I come and vote, you might have a bigger problem than worried about not having a bathroom there. So I just believe we're here to use this money up and we're going to do the best we can with it. And it's not picking and choosing, it's, it's just kind of figuring out what, what we can get our best man for our buck, you know. That's the way I feel about it. I agree. It's had nothing to do with this.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way because I'm sure that those who don't get anything or get very little will feel a little bit different when they leave here today. Especially when fourteen million dollars came in, two thousand seventeen, there was already fourteen million dollars that came into the county. On this paper, read it for yourself. Don Scher made this paper up. And we have more money that has come in since. That was eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, four more years since then. So how much more money has come in? And.
Just think how bad the county would be if we didn't have it.
That's what I did, that's what I said.
The point is, we're doing well. Let's not put that down, but we have tasks before us.
As in, the commissioners are doing well? But it should be.
County is doing well.
But they, why are they all here tonight asking for help?
Here to give away. You'd stand in line too. I don't blame any of these people for being here.
Jan, if you were being respectful of us and the audience here, I think you would have added your plan to the agenda. And said, I have a new agenda item.
Just got my paperwork. On the Friday? Yeah, just got it on Friday. Saturday, Sunday. Three days to read it and come up with something.
I know, but you, you should, you should have put your plan on.
No, I don't have, no, I don't have to have a plan. I'm telling you the plan now. Again, I don't work for you guys, I work for them. I don't have to, I don't have to answer to you.
City on this commission, I don't agree with your plan.
Well, okay, that's good, but I'm telling you that I don't work for you guys. I work for them. And your attitude is, I mean, through the judge out here, I'm glad that you behave the way you are. And especially you, Sam. You think.
What? I come to this county. You want a campaign speech, here it is. I come to this county, I walked in to buy some desk. She said to me, your commissioner just left. Can you do two meetings a month to the? I said, sure, it's four thirty in the morning afternoon, I can do that. Well, two meetings ended up being about eight a month. I still work every day. This year I went to Florida, I flew back six times to not miss a meeting. I flew back. And you said to me, how the hell can you do that? I said, they pay me seven or eight grand. I said, I can fly for eight hundred bucks for a trip. I can do that. You know, so don't talk to me about commitments to this county. And if somebody wants to run against me and they want to do, I wish him well to do a better job. I don't wake up in the morning and go, I really think I need this job. I, I got enough to do. But I want to tell you, I'm here, I'm going to do the best I can. And, and I think this is a business. And I think you got to have, you got to have some expenses and you don't spend more than you take in. Or you're not going to be in here with the county or you run an ice cream store, you run a funeral. So that's the way it works and that's how I look at it. But anybody here, I don't, you're in my townships, you're more than welcome to run against me. I haven't turned my petition in because I, I still want to go to Florida next year for a couple of months. And I don't want them to run. But that's okay. I don't wake, I don't live and breathe this, but I do the best I can here. And so that's my campaign speech.
So, don't we try to move on?
This ARP, okay.
All right. I can't make a motion, but kind of what I come up with, you know, we can all make a proposal, I'm assuming. I would, rather than one and a half million for the county, I would put away five hundred thousand because that's the project you're talking about. So then if we did that, you could give Newark the sixty-three thousand, Hamilton a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, Breckenridge the five hundred thousand, Wheeler two fifty since it's going to roads. Then Perrington two thirty. Ithaca fifty-five thousand, Fulton a hundred and eight thousand. And I, I would split the balance between the fire department and the city of Alma and which leave, which is six hundred ninety-three thousand each. And that adds up to two point eight, two million eight hundred and sixty thousand. Two hundred and sixty thousand. Two million eight hundred and sixty thousand.
Two million.
I can't make a, I can't make a motion, but.
Okay, I'll still move up.
You know, what is the, excuse me, what is the number? Five hundred thousand add into the one point, one million eight hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars?
No, I would, rather than making a one point five million reserve, I would just make it five hundred thousand. So I would add one, I would add a million dollars to distribute.
So you're taking what we had and adding a million to it?
Right. With one point eight six one eight by four, I would add a million dollars to that rather than having the county reserve it and put just five hundred thousand in reserve.
Did you mention County Road Commission?
Oh, let's see, I wrote down, we could change, we could change some of this.
Could have said it, but I didn't hear it.
Okay, I wrote down eighty thousand for the generator. And figuring the garage, we could work on that maybe later or something.
Did you give anything to the airport?
I put down fifty thousand to the airport. Maybe I forgot this page.
Well, I didn't, there was a few things I just didn't hear, Chuck.
Okay, yeah, I, I, well, I'll go over it again. I came up with sixty-three thousand for Newark Township, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for Hamilton Township, five hundred thousand for Breckenridge, two hundred and fifty thousand for Wheeler Township, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty thousand for Perrington, then fifty-five thousand for Ithaca. We did give them quite a bit of money already.
Yes.
And then a hundred and eight thousand for Fulton. And then split the balance of the two point eight million between the fire department and the city of Alma, which my calculations would be six hundred ninety-three thousand each. And if I did the math right, that adds up to two million eight hundred and sixty thousand.
And we kicked the meeting off with the sheriff's request that we hold the one and a half million reserve and that he's going to have an air purifier request for the jail coming at some point.
You know, I would hope we could handle that.
Well, there you go. There's your wind turbine money given to the sheriff.
Well, that wouldn't, I mean, it's not going to be a whole lot of money, I wouldn't expect.
Exactly what I got there and said. We could sit down and figure this out. Thank you for doing that while I'm talking. So at least most people are getting something here tonight.
I think it's tough to put money into roads. I think everybody, every road in Gracia County needs to be redone. You know, it'd be great to ask. I think it's tough to put money into roads. I think the county commission or the road commission does the best they can with the funds they have there. They're paid for every mile that we have. I think it's tough to put money into roads. And so really, when you look at. I think with the city of Alma, we ought to bring it back up to the five hundred thousand dollar mark. We ought to give them two seventy-four. And then would be like Breckenridge and St., and I think we ought to give Breckenridge five hundred. I think we give St. Louis five hundred. And I think we ought to get city of Alma up to five hundred. I think we ought to take eight thousand dollars off Newark's proposal for the road and give them fifty-five thirty-seven. And that fifty-five thirty-seven will cover everything they need except the eight thousand dollars for road chipping or ceiling or whatever. I think the Hamilton Township, proud and key these people here, I think. I mean, when you look at their building, it is tough. I think they ought to have the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think Breckenridge ought to get five hundred thousand dollars. Their municipality, just like Alma, St. Louis, they're one of our bigger communities.
They're using that for roads, though.
No, not Breckenridge.
They're putting in that park.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought.
I think the village of Perrington, we, we've done well with them. They think they have the money for their sidewalks and stuff. I think we probably ought to cut their sidewalk stuff in half and give them thirty thousand dollars. I think Fulton Township, I don't think we ought to do it all. And I think we ought to take care of the well. I think we ought to, we ought to buy the sixteen acres. I didn't ask Denise, are you still here?
Yeah.
You have that secured, that sixteen acres for. Get that?
Yes.
I think we ought to buy that sixty acres because we're going to have to put a lagoon in. I think they're going to have to fix this lift station down at Rainbow Lake. I live at Rainbow Lake, I don't have sewer. I live on the wrong side. So I don't want you to think it's fixing my sewer. I think that we ought to do the sewer replacement there as forty-five five. And I think that we ought to do the BSNA stuff there. So we would give, we would give the Fulton Township one hundred and fifty-two nine seventy-one. We're going to buy the road commission and generator, you know, we, we bought generators from never small communities. We've given, we've given the city of Ithaca five hundred thousand dollars. But got a problem with a sewer truck and I got to believe that the county probably is a big sewer user in this city, I think. Probably one of the biggest sewer users in this. So we, we probably benefit a lot by having, having the city fix our sewer here. So I think we ought to buy this hundred and ten thousand dollars. That number comes to one, oh, and then we looked at, I looked at eight seventy-three, what was that for?
Did you give anything to the fire department?
No, we've done the fire, we bought radios, we bought a number of things for the fire departments. But the number comes to one, one point three four three two seventy-seven.
One point what?
One point three. One point three hundred and forty-three thousand two. So it's just a little bit under what we have to give away.
So that leaves another five hundred thousand.
Yeah, five hundred thousand left, yeah.
Did you give anything to the airport?
No. We got five hundred thousand left and we're going to give one point eight away. That's my fault.
I'm more for probably, or surface.
I'll make a motion to do some of this plan.
I'll support.
Motion from Commissioner Lemberman, seconded by Commissioner Bailey.
I want to say something in discussion. There's about five hundred grand left. So if you, if something with that five, I really had no. This thought.
So you want to make this, this could be a two-step process?
We could do this and then if somebody wants to look at, we have, we'll have about five hundred grand left.
I'd like to give at least a hundred and fifty.
Let's, let's do this motion and that's what's.
Yeah, we'll go.
Passes or it doesn't pass.
Agree. They have a motion on the floor.
Fifty thousand for side, we, we wouldn't do road money. I mean, if you took sidewalk money and did whatever you need to do with it, we would just cover thirty. It sounded like you had fifty-seven thousand dollars for the sidewalks. We would contribute thirty thousand to the sidewalks. So when you reported to us, if this passes, thirty thousand dollars.
I'm going to add this up to make sure I have.
Yeah, Angie, yeah, why don't you work on that?
You want the numbers again?
You have fifty-five thousand thirty-seven for Newark.
You've got two hundred and seventy-four thousand for Alma.
One.
Got one fifty. Hamilton, you've got five hundred.
Breckenridge.
You've got thirty thousand for Perrington.
Yeah.
Got one fifty-two.
Nine seventy-one.
One.
Yeah. Road commission eighty thousand.
Hundred and ten for the truck.
And I realize that's over a hundred and ten thousand like over Alma and the other communities, but I believe the county has more employees using the sewer than lots of people in this community.
So Sam, I've got one million three fifty-two eight.
Okay, I was a little bit over eight thousand. Who's eighty-three seventy-one?
I have Fulton, right? One fifty-two nine seventy-one.
Oh, you know what I did? Yeah, one fifty-two nine seventy-one, yeah.
Okay.
So would you get one?
One million three fifty-two oh eight.
Okay, I'm off, uh, six thousand bucks. I got one million, yeah.
One million three fifty-two oh eight, oh, oh, eight.
Okay, any further discussion?
So that leaves more than five hundred thousand?
I'll tell you in a second here. We got one eighty-one to give away. One eighty-one to spend. And, and who knows if there'll be another round here from now.
We don't.
We don't know that. We still have a million and a half setting sometimes. If somebody has a catastrophe or something, we still have it.
I agree with it.
Um, so we got one eighty.
Sam, I can probably tell you that. So we had one million eight sixty-one, eight fifty-four. One three five two oh eight. So that equals, that leaves five hundred and nine thousand eight forty-six left. Uh, five hundred and nine thousand eight forty-six.
That's fine, we can put that in a bank and we can figure out.
But if you want us to put some up, it don't matter.
Come to use it.
Uh, will you do me a favor? You've given money to York, right?
Who?
North Township.
York.
Yes, yes, you did.
Yeah.
How about, um, the township hall renovation, Hamilton?
Yeah.
Breckenridge, yes. Wheeler?
No. It's all road.
Uh, Perrington?
Um, thirty thousand would contribute to the sidewalk.
Okay, and the fire chief, you said no? Alma?
You'd have five hundred there already.
And Ithaca, yes.
One ten, yeah.
And Fulton?
The total for.
One fifty-two.
One fifty-nine seventy-one.
And, um, airport, you said no. Alba Township, no.
Alba did that straight.
And asked for it, whether that was.
We can take a look at that the next meeting, because we've got, we've got some more we can deal with. And we'll settle it out from there.
Is there some reason why we can't give at least fifty thou, or like fifty thousand to the airport?
We got five oh nine left. Me to be fifty, you know, you.
Well, I think we should distribute that tonight. And, you know, I still say that we should put another million of the, of the, uh, where I'd be at, we should put another million from the, uh, uh, the amounts we've reserved for the county toward it. But that's my position.
Yeah, I agree also.
So do we have any further discussion? And if, if you're good with what you got down, Angie, uh, you should call the roll.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
No, I think we should spend more.
Not right now, Chuck. We got five hundred and nine thousand dollars and eight, five oh nine eight forty-six.
That we would hundred thousand. Okay, I'll make a motion that I'd like to give the airport fifty thousand.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion on the floor, uh, to, uh, give the airport fifty thousand? It's a, uh, say they can't bill to the feds. Any discussion?
That's to take the tanks.
To take the tank, just take removal. Any discussion? Angie, can you call the roll on that?
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. So that leaves another, uh, five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight forty-six.
Five hundred thousand? I'd like to make a motion that we give this to the fire department. Yeah.
The four fifty-nine eight forty-six.
Well, I'd like to really give them a million dollars.
Yeah.
We all would.
Okay, do we have five hundred thousand we can give to them?
Well, we just did fifty thousand for the airport, so that would leave four hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
I'm sorry, four hundred what?
Four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars.
That's how much we have left?
Of the, of the money, it was setting aside one point five million for the county, which I think is excessive.
Well, I'll make a motion that we give the four hundred and fifty-nine.
Eight forty-six?
Yeah.
Some of that up.
Well.
What do you think?
You are splitting it up between six fire departments. So why don't you go to second, my.
It's like Sam was thinking about something else.
I don't know, even if you look at what.
You want to throw something?
I mean, is it important to have a building, a county building somewhere else? I don't know nothing about.
Satellite building.
Is that an important thing?
I think it's important, but I think we can talk about it. Yeah.
Again, I'll make a motion that we give four hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars to the six fire departments to split up.
I'll support it.
So I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Bunting, second by Commissioner Bailey to split up the, uh, balance, remaining balance by the five fire departments. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Passed. I'd like to make a motion that we table the rest until we get a better handle on what the county's got, what the sheriff's got in mind, with the jail. And, uh, we come back and look at this.
Didn't we, didn't we last, last meeting, didn't we vote for the million and a half in reserve?
That or the meeting before.
I, I thought we already did.
Oh, you know.
Thought we voted.
Yeah.
Which, and I thought Mike was here.
I thought he was too.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
So we already have that voted in, that, so we've spent the rest of this money.
Yeah.
Really kind of
Kind of like.
Out of money if we, until something comes up or whatever.
Yeah, I think we should now concentrate on the million and a half that's left for the county. And possibly, we're gonna spend enough out of there that we're gonna have more money to give away. Or let, uh, let.
I just. It's just.
So, but there's a lot of things that are gonna be on our agenda and, and so I, I just think that we've done a lot tonight and I'm proud of what we've done. And so we're gonna be able to do more and, uh, we'll go from there. I'm not gonna say it's over, not over till it's over, you know?
I guess I want to tell everybody here, it tough decision to decide who gets money, who doesn't get money. And, um, me personally, I wanted to be the fairest to be able to drive by this ten years ago. You know something, the county helped do that. You know, and, um, and so I think with a lot of stuff we did this evening, I think with a lot of stuff we did out of the first round of money, I think I know there was some big asks.
You want to just drop your table?
Yeah, I think we did the best we could and, and, uh, and I think it worked out okay, in my opinion, whether it's good or bad.
So any unfinished business anybody can think of? Then we have additional public comment. You're certainly all welcome to make a comment. Tom?
On behalf of Alma Township, I greatly appreciate the gift. We'll do goodbye and, uh, look forward to seeing what the new model looks like in the next year.
Go ahead, could you step up? We got a mic up here. I think we heard Tom.
I'm Bridgette McPherson from the Village of Breckenridge. Um, just wanted to thank you all for this evening and this process that we've all had to go through. All this extra money is always fun until the hard parts. I ask that you consider as you work through the end of this, uh, in funding the fire association's request at the full one point two million. I see on your report that there's some salary reimbursement level with this fund. So that leads me to believe that there's some general fund or some department monies that are in excess because we budgeted. Well, things like the, the jail ventilation and that kind of stuff can maybe be absorbed with, um, those salary reimbursements.
A lot of the salary adjustments went to the COVID money. That we had to pay people extra to be here. We, we got like private stuff delivered to us and stuff, and we had people working to hand that out, Dave and all these guys were. A lot of sorry stuff went.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't know the particulars of that. I guess, um, my reason up here is just to consider as you go through the rest of this. I do not believe that Breckenridge Fire has refused any radio. I think that was more of a plea department.
Yeah.
Situation.
Commission gave, uh,
I'm gonna say.
The nine thousand dollars to finish up the radio project for both Perrington and Ashley, that were not on the radio system. They had no points to be there.
Okay, and I know we at, in Breckenridge Wheeler Fire, put together a really comprehensive year plan where we, we have replaced all of our radios, so.
We were ready to do that in Ithaca, but we honestly did in Ithaca. We got one donation, one family, forty-five thousand dollars to finish our project, but we didn't have any.
You're, you're right, Bridgette, in the aspect of Alma Fire, Breckenridge Fire, St. Louis Fire Department, and the fire department has not received any of these funds until today. So that seventy-six thousand dollars is what it lies down to, is the first fund that we have received from this.
Thank you.
Yes.
So again, my, my reasoning up here is just to consider, uh, making that request for the fire association. Well, on behalf of Breckenridge, um, manager Ostner and I over the last part and are very proud of where we've, we've taken Breckenridge and our community. And, um, this pavilion project is just gonna kind of bring that congregating and gathering of our wholesome community. Um, and we invite everyone in the county. Thank you.
Anyone else? Step forward, please.
We appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I thank you. Definitely appreciate.
And like, by the way, the fire departments do appreciate. Already my, our departments receive, so I think there's a little bit of a contrast there. But this is, uh, a step in the right direction for us. We'll do what we can with what's provided. Thank you.
Well, the people in front that's from, uh, M, Energy, Ren, M, Energy, I can never say right.
Energy.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Um, I, I don't want to take away from the important discussions tonight, but as Sam mentioned, the two updates since we've been here last is, we did have a bigger meeting at Fulton a couple of weeks ago, where we received, um, a recommendation of approval from Fulton's planning commission. And then the following week, we got a approval from Murphy. Needs for the project. But happy to answer any question before we get the full date.
Anyone else? Maybe, I also too, hopefully can do some more for you folks, so. Stay tuned, I guess. I believe we exhausted our agenda. Uh, without objection, we're adjourned.